All right, it is one o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of August 11th, 2020?
Some will, some will agree.
Second, Fitch.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The August 11th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this afternoon, so we will move on to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises or zoning matters this afternoon, so we will move to road and bridge matters. Under Road and Bridge Matters, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and refer to the county counselor, and that will be the order.
Number four.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six, sixth district.
Receive, file, and the matter be referred to the council as a committee of the whole.
So ordered.
Item number seven, fifth district.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second. Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, seventh district.
Receive, file, and refer to the county counselor and the Department of Planning, Department of Revenue, Assessors Office, and Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number nine.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 10.
Receive, file, and amendment to the contract be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Tracus.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number 12, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14, third district.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. We have no add-ons this afternoon. We will proceed with the report of the county executive.
St. Louis County, we got ahead of COVID-19 by acting sooner than most other metropolitan areas. Through early action, we were able to keep our hospitals from being overwhelmed. As we continue to navigate living with the virus until a vaccine is developed, social distancing and preventive guidelines are our best course of action. Yesterday, we announced the second federally qualified health center partnership to come out of CARES funding. In partnership with the county and others, Peoples Health Centers was able to reopen their clinic in Ferguson where they can expand services to thousands of residents through the Peoples COVID-19 mitigation outreach program. In addition to regular health services like well-child nutrition and flu shots, Peoples in Ferguson is now distributing PPE by the St. Louis County Department of Public Health and information on how to access services and prevent the spread of COVID. Although much of our attention is on COVID-19, we are still focused on running government effectively and saving taxpayer money where we can. This summer, I asked the council to authorize us to refinance several bonds. And at the time of my original request for legislation, I estimated that the refinancing would produce about $14 million in total debt service savings. Today, I'm very pleased to inform you that the refinancing produced the debt savings of about $22.4 million per county taxpayers. As I promised from the very start, my administration is committed to making government work not for the people in power, but for the people it serves. From preventing the spread of COVID-19 to saving taxpayer money where we can, we are doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Page. We will proceed with report of special committees.
Receive, file, and the report dated August 11th, 2020 be adopted and submitted.
Second, Daze.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to public forum. As you all know, we are proud of this opportunity to hear from the public during our weekly meetings. We know that this is an opportunity to serve as a positive example to residents and other policymaking bodies in our community. We encourage every person who participates in this forum to speak with tolerance and respect towards the council, towards other officials in county government, and towards each other. As a reminder of the rules, only comments sent to councilcomments@stlouisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour before the meeting is set to start, will be recorded in the public record. The email must contain the speaker's name. The message must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is the same allotment allowed per person during normal meetings. The administrative director or a designee will read the comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the journal. And with that, please read the first comment.
Madam Chair, we have 90 written public comments this afternoon. Our first one is from Katie Kaufman. "I am the president of the Maplewood-Richmond Heights School Board, the mother of a four-year-old and a nine-month-old and a 12-year resident of Richmond Heights. MRH District has been proud to invest in a high-quality early childhood program for nearly two decades. Our district's early childhood program is well-respected in the community and typically serves about 123 and 4-year-olds each year. We pay our pre-K teachers the same salary as K-12 teacher. We continue to have a waiting list for our program despite building additional classrooms just five years ago. We don't have the physical space for more children, and yet the need for early childhood care and education grows within our district and broader community. I am also a member of the Ready by Five campaign. Over the past three years, I have come to know educators who care for our region's youngest with incredible skill and love. I have come to know the predominantly Black women business owners who have kept desperately needed quality programs going on shoestring budgets under multiple layers of governmental bureaucracy. These educators who care for children as young as six weeks old are some of the most dedicated, while also being underappreciated by the broader community that qualifies them as being less than K-12 teachers. Many early childhood educators have master's degrees in their craft and are paid poverty wages with no benefits. The children they teach won't remember them, but will benefit their whole lives because of these first experiences. I applaud Councilwomen Clancy, Dunaway, and Daze for introducing Bill 188 last week. The acknowledgement to working parents across the county that early childhood education is essential to economic development and workforce sustainability is appreciated during this time of economic and workforce uncertainty. The acknowledgement to early childhood educators that they are essential and worth a significant investment in order to improve the foundation they are building with our children would set St. Louis County apart in a positive, proactive way for generations. Our kids can't wait. Budgets are a reflection of our values. Your choices are your priorities. I urge you to prioritize people over pavement and continue to move forward with Bill 188 to invest community support into the care and education of our children." From Amy Pelker. "Councilwomen, can you please explain, define, the economic development purposes that you expect this tax to tend to? Also, is the purpose of this tax to provide universal preschool for all kids in St. Louis County, no matter family income levels, thereby being utilized by all of our school districts? How will the Oversight Board be chosen? Also, if this bill is passed, I am officially sunshine requesting to be emailed a copy of the actual ordinance itself with all the details to this tax." From Jenna Voss. "I'm writing in support of Bill 188. My family has benefited from many public and private partnerships which have provided rich early childhood experiences for our three children. We couldn't be more grateful for the caregivers who have joined our village over the years. Early childhood programs like Central Institute for the Deaf and Villa de Maria Montessori are part of our story. Public school programs like Kirkwood School District have provided formative learning environments and strong connected relationships. St. Louis Public School parents as teachers gave me the confidence and guidance I needed as a first-time mom. Then Kirkwood parents as teachers supported my family again as I grew into a mother of twins. The strong, consistent relationships we encountered, paired with enriched playful experiences for our children, have launched our family on a developmental trajectory that will ensure my children will live enviable lives. I call you, members of the county council, to join me in imagining a world where all children and families are afforded these rich early childhood opportunities. Bill 188, which has been informed by brilliant community organizers and grassroots collaboration from the public and private sector, will move us in that direction. I also share comments today from my perspective as a professional early childhood special educator. As Associate Dean of the College of Education and Allied Health Professions at Font Bonn University, I spend my professional workdays preparing future professionals to join this early childhood workforce. The early childhood investment is one of the most efficient we can make. As James Heckman, American economist, indicates, investment in early childhood education is a smart one, as we can support and build systems that will focus on relationships, early learning, and wellness instead of using funds to incarcerate, fight crime, or provide compensatory assistance programming. When parents and caregivers are supported, their productivity in their own workplaces increases. For example, in my own family, early childhood programs have allowed me to have an academic career while my partner provides community healthcare as a primary care physician. Finally, we see that communities with robust early childhood systems thrive. What's been good for us could be good for all. So let's ensure high-quality, joyful early childhood education is a universal privilege in our region. We will all be better for it." From Margot Smith. "I am commenting on Bill 188 as this issue means so much to myself, my family, our community, and our future. Parents of younger children than mine don't often have time or energy to participate in comment. They face sleep deprivation and overwhelming stresses in a typical world, all only amplified in pandemic. My family has been lucky enough to access high-quality care for our two boys in the past. However, this was only possible for us through my connection to and employment in early education and care. Because of this role, I also know that even full-fee-paying families are not covering the full cost of their child's high-quality care and education on their own. All families are subsidized in some way. High-quality and highly-trained early educators and their children and families bear the brunt of this reality with poverty-level wages and a complex, unstable jigsaw puzzle house of cards of funding sources ready to collapse. This is the ultimate equity issue we must get right in order to emerge from this pandemic heading the right direction for our communities. A strong early childhood system supporting thriving children and their adults means a stronger, more equitable St. Louis region. Increased quality of and access to positive early relationships and experiences is repeatedly and overwhelmingly shown to save public K-12 school systems money. Improved poverty, excuse me, improved property values, and most importantly, support families' health and well-being, saving at least $7 per $1 invested on average, and at least $13 per $1 invested in less well-resourced communities. Right now, the early care and education non-system that we navigate instead increases family stress. Our lack of a system is a negative contributor to parental stress and children's development. Unaffordable and inaccessible even for families who work full-time or have multiple jobs, a lack of a coordinated and supported high-quality system means lost wages, fewer productive employees, and a shrinking economy. Age 0 to 5 is a critical period of rapid brain development. We don't have time to waste. For these reasons and so many more, all children ages 0 to 5 should have high-quality early childhood opportunities. A family's income should not determine a child's access to healthy environments and opportunities to learn, grow, and thrive in with their peers. Let's give our community a chance to get this right and support Bill 188." From Rianan Kay. "Thank you for taking my comments. Me and my family live in Maplewood. I have seen the importance of early childhood education as a parent, as an architect, and as a recipient of it myself. Our son will be entering kindergarten in a couple of weeks, and I know thanks to the education, enrichment, encouragement, and love he received from the ECC he attended in University City that he is well-prepared. He attended from the age of 12 weeks to five years, allowing his father and I to both work full-time, knowing that he was thriving in a wonderful environment. A couple of his teachers completed their education degrees while also working there, and he really wishes he could be in their grade-school classrooms. Other teachers have been able to send their children to the place where they teach, allowing them to continue working while also providing a great learning foundation for their children. As an architect, I've worked with the YWCA to build new early childhood education opportunities for families in this region and seeing the excitement of the teachers and staff in a new facility. There are early Head Start and Head Start programs around the region providing opportunities for working parents and strengthening the communities they serve. Investment in early childhood services is a win for everyone and creates a more equitable St. Louis."
Madam Chair, continuing from Cindy Winkler. Greetings. Perhaps this is a more accurate summary for Bill 188, Proposition C, aka Better Together Light. Opening note. Obligating the St. Louis County taxpayers in perpetuity for a tax that can be spent in surrounding counties is an important decision. Please rely on primary source documents like statutes and the actual bill proposing the tax to guide you. The Proposition C. Do you agree to a half percent economic development sales tax for all of St. Louis County, which may be used for daycare and preschool for ages 0 to 5 as follows? Number one. Missouri allows this economic development sales tax to be used outside of St. Louis County boundaries, i.e. St. Louis City. Efforts to bring this economic development sales tax to the ballot have been regional. In fact, many NFP backers are based in St. Louis City. It may be presumed that they expect to participate in these funds. 25% of the economic development sales tax can be used for administration NFP costs. Tax is expected to generate $80 million annually. There is no sunset provision for the tax. It goes on in perpetuity. Economic Development Sales Tax expenditures are directed by a volunteer board consisting of one member appointed by school districts and four members appointed by the county council, and possibly two appointed by city mayors. City Economic Development Sales Tax Board is required to report once per year on the use of funds and on progress of projects allowable by Economic Development Sales Tax, including 20% of the fund being required to go towards projects, samples of which are listed in the statute, and in parentheses, "development of export opportunities for Missouri agricultural products and improvement of wastewater treatment," capacity to name a few. Check here for yes or here for no. By way of reminder, on April 28th, 2020, the current legislators for districts 1, 2, 4, and 5 set groundbreaking precedent by ceding legislative oversight and control for spending of CARES Act funds to acting county executive via emergency order. The council chair introduced the bill. Councilmembers for districts 1 and 2 are cosponsors and for express support. Following from Christine Novales. "This line has become a bit of a mantra in our household as a way to challenge our preschooler and give him the confidence to try. Pre-COVID, my son belonged to the sycamore classroom at our local preschool, and this sense of belonging has become part of his identity. I apologize, I should have read, in parentheses, the very top, 'sycamores do hard things,' which is the line that they're referring to. Given our childcare capacity challenges in St. Louis County, only half of the kids his age have the magical opportunity for learning that comes from ages 0 to 5. One way to grow even more sycamores is to invest in early childhood education. We know that an early investment sows rewards long into children's lives. As a working parent during COVID, I've become acutely aware of how necessary childcare is. Reading mommy blogs and Facebook posts for ways to fill in my son's days is no substitute for the qualified teachers who are guiding his learning. Parents need the support of childcare not only for their children, but also to further their own careers and their education. Two years ago at this time, I found myself in a bind. Our childcare provider went back to school, and there were no spots available in our community for full-time daycare or preschool. In a neighborhood group I'm a part of, I hear the stress from parents on a weekly basis about finding childcare. With more quality childcare available, communities will attract homebuyers, a benefit to everyone, even those without children. Thank you for considering the importance of this bill. While raising taxes may not always be the popular choice, you two, like the sycamores, can do hard things." The following comments from Adelaide Lancaster. "Writing in support of Bill 188. A primary reason my family chose to move to St. Louis was because of its reputation as a good place to raise a family. While there are several amenities that that give that credence, our childcare ecosystem is decidedly not one of them. I'm a mother of three who, like many moms, has had to negotiate the trajectory of my career through the constant cost-benefit analysis to determine what kind of childcare I needed and could afford. As residents of St. Louis County, we always had to run that analysis through the gauntlet of inconsistent, uncoordinated, high-demand childcare options. Ultimately, we use a patchwork of preschools, landing once I was able to work more at our school district's early childhood center. Many years, I, like many moms, paid to work or broke even financially. But because my kids received excellent care and because I ultimately was able to protect the long-term trajectory of my career, I consider myself lucky. Not every mom is as lucky. Many have even fewer choices, fewer funds, and fewer rewards. Many of those moms have to work regardless, and that lucky scenario I described, it didn't benefit everyone. Many teachers who so lovingly cared for my children are drastically underpaid for the work that they do. Many of the providers and centers struggle with the financial game of Jenga that they must play to stay open. Even when it works, it doesn't really work. And that's what we need to begin to fix. Some say that increased investment in childhood education is not good for small businesses as if people who run and work in small businesses are not parents. Some may say that increased investment in early childhood education, excuse me, early childhood is not good for public schools as if strong public schools don't need strong preschools, and as if many people working in schools aren't also parents who need access to care, and as if the families serving public schools don't also need early childhood supports. We are a region of families who builds itself as a good place for families. It's time we act like it. Please pass Bill 188. Let families speak in November. We can do better. Kids have been waiting for their turn to be a priority long enough." From Jennifer and Jake Fox. "I'm a small business owner of a company of about 30 employees with offices in DePere and Webster Grove. My husband and I both work for my family business and have three children ages 3, 5, and 1. Without childcare, we would be lost. Not only do the early childhood providers love on and teach our children the most formative years, they allow my husband and I to continue to provide for our family and to run a business that helps nearly 30 other families in St. Louis County. Early childhood providers have taught me how to be a better parent, taught my children basic manners, helped potty training, taught them about nature, art, books, and fostered a love for learning that will hopefully follow them throughout their adult lives. Access to quality, safe, engaging early childhood programs built up our community, strengthened our K-12 programs, enriched our children, and allowed parents to go to work and provide for their families. We undervalue the work that these amazing providers do every single day. They love our babies as much as we do. They hold, rock, sing, teach, and cherish our children. We all deserve our dedication and our resources." The following from Maggie Klonsky. "I'm a mother and educator and a community member in full support of Bill 188. Investment in and care and nurturing of the health and minds of our youngest community members impacts the wellness of our larger community in every aspect. Research in neuroscience, education, and developmental psychology all demonstrate the impact of experiences for children ages 0 to 5, not to mention that the return of investment for quality early childhood education in terms of money saved in the healthcare system, prisons, tax revenue, and special education is 13%. Relationships formed with caregivers and teachers in high-quality programs allow children to flourish. And the research shows that the stimulation and effect on brain development provided by these programs during this critical brain development window has long-term effects on children's livelihoods and their abilities to reach their potentials. But access to high-quality programs has huge disparities, making Bill 188 critical. Kids from families with financial resources start kindergarten up to two years ahead of those with lower-income homes. The cycle of poverty is reinforced when those who fall behind in school are more likely to drop out of high school, and those who drop out of school are eight times more likely than those who graduate to become incarcerated. According to a 2017 Pentagon data, staggering 71% of all Americans between the ages of 17 and 25 could not qualify for military service, either because they were too poorly educated, they had a criminal record, or they were physically unfit. Retired military generals consider failure to invest in early childhood education a full-blown national security problem. Furthermore, while we care for our progeny, we as a community can also offer better support for our parents as costs for childcare continue to soar. Access to childcare provides families with job stability with fewer missed days of work. Parents can be more focused, more satisfied, and more productive at their jobs. And because women often bear the responsibilities of childcare, lack of access to affordable care especially impedes their opportunities to pursue careers and education. So affordable place, excuse me, so affordable access to high-quality 0 to 5 programs would support the health and well-being of our youth and families by allowing them to thrive and reach their fullest potentials. This in terms creates an economically This in terms creates an economically stronger region, all of which lead to the vibrant flourishing communities where people want to live and raise their children.
Madam Chair, continuing with the comments from Marin Mellem. I am writing in support of the early childhood education sales tax currently before you. My family has benefited from wonderful childcare for my two boys since they were twelve weeks old. This has allowed my husband and me to work in advancing jobs we find challenging and engaging. It also allows us to be financially stable. Our boys also feel the benefit of this care. They spend their days in a beautiful school with qualified caring educators who teach evidence-based curriculum. My boys are thriving and they love going to school. Excuse me. Our childcare experience comes with a cost, though. We pay well above the statewide average of eight hundred dollars a month per child for their care. The reality is that the high cost of daycare makes it inaccessible to many parents. We must do better for our community, particularly our most vulnerable. While all children and families benefit from early childhood education, ECE, it is particularly important to those who face economic or social disadvantage. By kindergarten, there already exists an achievement gap between children from high-income households and those from low-income households, and between black children and white children. ECE is a power to narrow this gap. This investment pays dividends not only for the individual child and family, but for our community as a whole. A child who receives ECE is less likely to need special education in elementary school, less likely to be held back a grade, and more likely to graduate from high school than peers who do not receive ECE. Higher graduation rates are positively correlated with higher job earnings and better health, while negatively correlated with dependence on public health programs and incarceration. In the shorter term, the community also benefits because parents who can work while their child receives quality ECE are able to provide economic stability for their families. The privilege that I have to work and provide for my family while my children thrive in a care, in the care of nurturing professionals should not be a privilege at all. Every family should be able to reap these benefits. This early childhood education sales tax will be a win-win for both families and our community. Thank you for your consideration of this important opportunity. Next comment is from Brooke Taylor. My name is Brooke Taylor, and I am a resident and voter in St. Louis County District Three. I am writing in support of Bill one eighty-eight. I want to see early childhood education funding for our region. My partner and I have three daughters ages one, six, and eight, and we have seen firsthand the positive impact of a quality early childhood education program. We have all experienced the financial burden of paying for these programs. We are both educators, and we know from personal and professional experience the difference that ECE makes in preparing children for school. We also understand the significant positive economic impact that such programs have on our communities. Studies have shown an incredible return on investment for dollars spent on early childhood education. It saves taxpayer money by being a preventative measure against crime and poverty. It gives parents, especially single moms, the opportunity to work and pursue their own education, which benefits their family, their community, and our entire region. We want to see the St. Louis region be a leader and a change-maker in this area. As we all collectively consider how best to move forward in our trying times, putting in place resources to help our children is surely an important part, place to start. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next comment from Sarah Irwin. I am writing to the county council to express my full support of a sales tax to fund early childhood. In St. Louis, there are over eighty thousand kids ages zero to five, yet licensed childcare facilities have the capacity to serve only half of these kids and their families. If we prioritize our region's caregivers, children, and families, then a better future will be achievable for our community. In addition to the positive social emotional impacts that an investment in children ages zero to five has, our communities experience long-term positive economic impacts. Invest today in early childhood education and save money later that would go towards incarceration, crime response, and government assistance programming. Access to high-quality childcare also increases the productivity of working parents. When your child is well cared for, you can focus on the job at hand. Also, just like how, how high-quality public schools attract home buyers and increase property values, so does having access to quality childcare programming. Despite all of this, childcare providers receive no meaningful public investment, creating a system that is not accessible to our entire community. As a lifelong St. Louisan, I believe it is time to design a system that is accessible to and benefits all children, families, and caregivers. I support Bill one eighty-eight. Next comment from Laura Schuman. As a Webster Groves resident, parent of three children, and psychologist with background in child development, I am writing in strong support of Bill one eighty-eight. Early childhood education, ECE, is something I have taken for granted until the pandemic. The privilege that blinded me from the daily reality of families was lifted. How do families with working parents maintain their jobs with young children at home if they do not have access to ECE? Then I recall the numerous centers we visited before choosing the one we felt offered the best ECE, taking on a significant financial commitment. What about families who cannot choose or whose geography only offers one option or no option at all? Embarrassingly, I did not know of the severe shortage of openings in ECE settings, leaving almost half of zero-to-five-age children without any options. As I learn about ECE, I am convinced it is one of the most important investments we can make as a community. It is a system that impacts all people of all generations. Kids who receive ECE are less likely to fall into poverty or resort to criminal behavior across their lifespan, improving their quality of life and reducing the financial burden on the community. Parents with access to ECE are able to join the workforce without the stress of worrying about their child's safety. This results in improved financial stability, a reduced need for government assistance, enhanced productivity in the workplace, and greater contribution to a larger economic system that benefits the entire region. And as our elder population needs support on many levels, our younger generation's ability to provide is greatly enhanced by a fountain, by the foundations that begin in those first five years. The inequities we see across all major systems are rampant in our educational system. Lack of access to affordable, quality ECE contributes to these inequities. Let's stop putting out fires. Let's create a system of ECE that puts all children first, not just those with the, with the privileges my children have. The pandemic gave us yet another wake-up call. ECE is a critical piece of the recovery all families and communities will face in upcoming years. I know my children will be okay, but without this investment, many children will not. Let's make St. Louis a success story that other communities strive to emulate.
Continuing with public comments from Erin Fisher. What an opportunity we have. Let's, let's show our youngest children that we want what is best for them. Let's show our youngest children that they are our future and that our future is bright. Let's show our youngest children that we are ready to invest in them by investing in early childhood education. I support Bill one eighty-eight because all children are born ready to reach their full potential, but it is up to us to make that path possible. Since my first child was born five years ago, I have paid the equivalent of a year of college tuition per child to enroll them in early childhood programs. Early childhood educators have provided safe and nurturing environments for my children to thrive socially, emotionally, and intellectually while building skills to be kindergarten-ready. But St. Louis County's early childhood education system is underfunded and undersupported. The astronomical costs and limited number of licensed childcare facilities make ECE inaccessible to so many. A family's income should not prevent children from the opportunity to learn and grow. We know that investing in early childhood programs pays off exponentially. Investment in early childhood education is money later that would go towards incarceration, crime response, and government assistance programming. When parents have access to childcare and support, their productivity is increased, demonstrated by fewer missed days of work and pursuing further education. Communities with access to quality childcare programming attract home buyers and have increased property values compared to those that don't. We can build the foundation for a lifetime of success and make St. Louis County more equitable and more prosperous. Let's go. From Jen Hulman Odle. I write to you as parent of young children and also an early childhood educator of almost twenty years. I am in full support of a sales tax to help fund early childhood education. One of the reasons I so strongly support funding early childhood education is early intervention for potential disabilities. In their quote, "Falling through the cracks," end quote, report, a group of researchers with Forward through Ferguson found that children with disabilities are disproportionately likely to serve out-of-school suspension than their average counterparts. White females with no disabilities are the least likely, black males with disabilities are the most likely. When diagnostic tools are more readily available, children are more likely to receive diagnoses and services early. The likelihood of meeting goals and milestones goes up, making the need for later and more strict disciplinary action, suspension, or expulsion unnecessary. Having a successful school experience is so very essential to staying in school, staying out of trouble, and avoiding the devastating effects of the school-to-prison pipeline. Having productive members of society rather than incarcerated members of society provides countless benefits to our communities. Finding the financial resources for early intervention is not always easy, especially for families whose children don't attend quality early childhood programs. This tax initiative makes it a real possibility for many of those families. Please join me and other families and educators in supporting this initiative and supporting our young learners for the future. From Cindy Van Heest. Dear council members, I'm not happy with the state of affairs in St. Louis County. Here are my thoughts, and I know I represent a large majority. Number one, the schools need to reopen immediately. It's sad that the teacher union has so much power and control over our county and that Dr. Page is influenced by that group. Number two, the before and after care programs need to reopen as well as the services for our special needs children. The families of special needs children need our help as a community. Number three, I don't want to give the county any more money and will vote and tell everyone I know to vote against yet another tax hike in November. From Howard Joritzma. Well said. And he is referring to the comments I just read from Cindy Van Heest. From Joyce Marie. A fully embraced funded, I'm sorry, Joyce Marie Roberts, excuse me. A fully embraced, funded, and implemented Ready by Five initiative will be the catalyst to ensure we are preparing critical thinkers, civic-minded, and you inclusive leaders for our future global society in the service of children.
Following some from Suzie Schmidt. I support Bill one eighty-eight. Please add the measure to the ballot for the people to decide. Our children's future depends on it. Respectfully, Suzie Schmidt. From Tara Tinnan. Dear council members, my name is Tara Tinnan. I reside in District Three. I'm writing today ahead of the council meeting in support of Bill one eighty-eight in order to improve early childhood education by making quality services more affordable and accessible to all county residents. As a social worker who works prime, with primarily black families who have been disproportionately locked out of access to quality resources, I see firsthand the mothers who have had to choose not to work because they literally cannot afford to due to the costs of childcare. I've seen families with bachelors who are afraid to send their babies to their neighborhood options due to the trauma they've experienced at the hands of these systems. I've heard countless stories of heartbreak because mothers have no choice but to send their children to schools that they know do not value their children. Personally, even as part of a middle-class, two-parent family, I struggled trying to balance work and raising a family. I sent my three-year-old to pre-K full-time as this was the free option when part-time would have been best. But this was unaffordable as it was not free. It was expensive. We all know that affordable access to quality childcare and ECE brings wealth to neighborhoods by allowing families to work. We know that these options lead to home buying in neighborhoods, which raises property values and increases resources going to said neighborhoods. We know when parents have access to quality childcare, their stress levels go down and productivity goes up, which leads to healthier families. What our community is literally dying for is equitable access to opportunities that improve quality of life and long-term outcomes. We know that a region is only as healthy, safe, and successful as its least healthy, safe, and successful, which is bleak in St. Louis. Frankly, it will take creative and courageous, courageous systems level changes to impact this. It will take our leaders making it clear through their words and through their actions, policy changes, that they value all residents and that each family it serves is deserving of safety, health, and wellness. Childcare and pre-K services are integral in this system. Please help our region begin its healing and work toward a place where all members are given the opportunity to thrive, excuse me, starting from birth, and vote yes on Bill one eighty-eight. Thank you, Tara Tinnan. From Clayton Sterns. Since being appointed Director of the St. Louis County Justice Services, Raul Bonasco has created an extreme hostile. Pardon me. Let me start again. Since being appointed to Director of St. Louis County Justice Services, Raul, Raul Bonasco has created an extreme hostile dictatorship. Director Bonasco has bullied staff members, held their positions over their heads of staff members. Director Bonasco has nicknames for his staff members such as, and these are in quotes, red, chunky monkey, and part-time major. Instead of focusing on COVID-nineteen, Director Bonasco has focused on less important matters such as spending money. Director has spent thousands of unneeded, excuse me, spent thousands on unneeded uniforms, painting the facility, a canine, and six big screen TVs. Director Bonasco has created a massive overtime problem by creating a position of sergeant and promoted twenty-five officers to this position without replacing them with line officers. Director Bonasco has also, Director Pay, it's also Director Pay personnel to dock officers' time card if they clock out over thirty minutes late. Director Bonasco also holds staff to a higher standard than he holds himself. In closing, a simple Google search can show that Director Bonasco has a long history of corruption. From Angela Baker. I'm writing in support of Bill one eighty-eight. Access to quality childcare and early childhood education is an important part of our family's success. I believe all families in our region should have the same access and support. From a purely economic perspective, investment in children between the ages of zero and five years translates to long-term positive economic impacts. Investment in early childhood education actually saves money that would be later be spent as part of government assistance programming and/or incarceration and crime response. As a working parent, I know the value of having access to childcare and support. Without it, my spouse and I would have to choose the loss of one source of income to care for our children. When parents have access to quality childcare, their productivity increases because they miss fewer days of work and are able to pursue the further, further educational opportunities. Finally, when my spouse and I were engaged in our home buying search, we specifically looked in areas with excellent childcare and early childhood options. This is not uncommon. Communities with access to quality childcare programs attracts home buyers and increases property value. Please support Bill one eighty-eight and increase access to equitable early childhood education in St. Louis County. Thank you, Angela Baker. From Laura Eads. I'm writing in support of Bill one eighty-eight. I see early childhood education as a key component of the support needed to move our communities forward, and support of this initiative will have positive impacts for all community members for years to come. I recently worked for a nonprofit that provided support for early childhood education, I recently worked for a nonprofit that provided support for early childhood education, and I witnessed firsthand how quality early education, childhood education changes lives. This support provides children with the tools they need to enter kindergarten ready to grow and thrive while also allowing their caregivers to return to work or school, which helps the entire family thrive. Early childhood education has been shown to have an impact on reducing future crime rates, the need for public assistance, while also having positive effects on physical and mental health. I believe, I believe support of this bill is imperative. I hope to see our county councils for early childhood education in our region. Thank you.
Madam Chair, continuing with the comments from Brian Irwin. I wish to voice my support for Bill 188, the sales tax to fund early childhood education. This is a modest sales tax with enormous benefits for our country, county's children and families, and thus the county as a whole. Early childhood education is crucial to a child's success. The benefits of this will appear down the road in the form of less government dollars spent on incarceration, crime response, and assistance programs. Despite early childhood education's importance, it is not affordable for many families and most public school districts do not offer early childhood education for ages of zero to three. This tax would also help fund the public schooling's existing early childhood education programs through age five. Signature collection to put this tax on the ballot had begun before the pandemic hit our area, and I believe the threshold for putting this on the ballot would have been easily met under normal circumstances. Let's give our county the chance to show our support for our youngest residents and those who take care of them. Thank you. Next comment is from Benjamin Brown. My name is Benjamin Brown, and I am the owner and general manager of Satchmo's Bar and Grill located here in St. Louis County. I am writing in regard to the sales tax increase being proposed as reported in a recent article by the St. Louis Post-Dispatch. My intent is to respectfully request that you reconsider your position in support of the sales tax increase, also to hopefully shed some light on how this increase in sales tax will disproportionately affect one of the industry's hardest hit by COVID-19. Restaurant industry has already sacrificed as much as any industry in St. Louis. We've closed our businesses, wore masks, and followed all county guidelines. We tried to adapt and find ways to survive at 25% capacity, then 50% capacity, now once again 25%. As we continue to grind forward, we are seeing more and more of our peers permanently closing their doors with each passing week. According to a recent article by Restaurant Hospitality Magazine, as many as 85% of all independently owned restaurants across the country will be permanently closed by the time COVID-19 has run its course. And he references a website. So how does the county of St. Louis propose to thank our industry for the, for these sacrifices? By proposing to take a larger cut out of every restaurant's alcohol sales. That is the real-world effect of a sales tax increase on an industry that has sales tax baked into the price of drink sales, along with an increase, the board reduction in everyone's disposal income, which restaurants are dependent upon. The restaurant industry employs approximately 10% of the entire state's workforce, and I would imagine a decent percentage of your constituency, many of whom would be undoubtedly grateful if you decided to change course after weighing the damage this could cause to our already battered industry's moral and bottom line. I would appreciate you taking all of this under consideration before deciding to proceed with the sales tax proposal. Continuing down this path would be seen by many as a direct attack on one of our community's most belidgered industries. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from Maria Chappelle Nadal. Council members, I strongly urge you to vote no on the proposed early childhood education tax hike. In a time of economic uncertainty and a global pandemic, county families are suffering more than ever. Many of the families I represent can't afford current everyday expenses. In University City, homeowners are now having to pay an additional $100 annually for sewer lateral services. It is wholly nonsensical for this body to continue to ignore the needs of cash-strapped families. Furthermore, as tax-paying St. Louis County residents, it does not make sense for our tax revenue to go to St. Louis City. Only in-state statute does this occur now, and it is for things like the zoo and the arch. Why would this council limit proper oversight again? This proposal is nothing but a special interest money grab by rich political donors. To think county residents would not see through this obvious manipulation of our funds is a travesty. We're not stupid, and households with multiple generations living under the same roof should not be stepped on for the benefit of rich donors seeking political favors for pet projects. A better way to move forward would be to fully utilize the unused revenue in the Children's Service Fund. It is no secret those funds are never spent at 100%. This is not the right time to push for a new tax. This council would benefit by utilizing CARES Act funds for early childhood education. Better yet, this council could assist in the needs of children using special education services. This population has been completely ignored. Virtual education does not help students with special needs. Is anyone writing a master plan for education in St. Louis County? A tax rendering $84 million without a written plan and oversight is a complete waste. Finally, in this gross overreach, ask yourselves how this tax would harm poor school districts in North St. Louis County. How would this harm school districts that may need to increase their own taxes in the future? This ESE proposal is selfish governance at best. Vote no. Next comment is from Vicki Irwin. Please consider the following as support for Bill 188. I have a background in early childhood education and have seen firsthand how important it is for children to have solid groundwork to build upon. The earlier this building begins, the better. Early childhood education provides not only intellectual stimulation, but also important building blocks for social and emotional development. Providing guidance at this young age with monetary support for early childhood programs saves in the long run by reducing social problems that may result from our youth growing up without a solid groundwork. An example is the frustration that may result in school from being behind in basic skills, leading to a withdrawal and lack of self-confidence by not being on equal ground with peers. Fewer remedial programs would be necessary as well, leading to monies being available got other educational pursuits. Providing a safe environment combined with strong early learning programs also allows parents to pay more attention at work, leading to increased productivity and a more secure financial family. Thank you for your consideration. Next comment is from Meredith Albus. This is what my children's home library looks like, and she submitted two photos. It's what privilege and opportunity look like. My two children, three and six, were each read 1,000 books before they turned two. They are smart, inquisitive, kind, and wonderful human beings because they have been exposed to themes that drive those core values in books and through the adults in their lives. For far too long, wealthy children have been afforded the opportunity of higher-quality early childhood education, and our nation has suffered as a result. Simply look around and you will see examples. Every child deserves to be smart, not just ones with parents who can afford it.
From Colleen Hogan. I'm writing in support of Bill 188. Access to quality early childhood education programs is vital to the health and well-being of our community. Communities that invest in their young children experience long-term positive economic impacts. When parents have a safe, stable, enriching place to leave their children while they work, they are able to be productive members of the workforce. And parents who are pursuing further education are able to focus on gaining the knowledge they need to build their family's futures when they know their children are well-cared-for and thriving. We need to invest in high-quality early childhood education that fairly compensates the caregivers who provide it. As an early childhood educator, I did not make enough money to consider sending my own infant children to the center at which I worked, and I had to make the difficult choice to put my career on hold to stay home to raise my children when they were young. I watched my co-teachers provide phenomenal care to the toddlers in our classroom every day while struggling to provide for their own families on our meager wages. We can and must do better. We have the opportunity to make an investment in the children of our region that will generate long-lasting social and economic returns. As a 10-year resident of Maplewood, I have seen how the incredible preschool in our school district has attracted young families to our area and become a foundation for our neighborhood. All of our communities deserve access to quality early childhood education programs around which to grow. Please pass Bill 188. From Katie Stalter. I am writing to express my support of a sales tax to fund early childhood education. I personally have seen the benefits of such programs in my own children. As a working mother in a household with two working parents, both of my children started childcare as infants. Those daycare programs evolved into full preschool programs with curriculum that prepared my children for school. When my older daughter started kindergarten, she already knew how to read. She was used as the structure of school. She was used to the structure of school, and she could not have been more ready for that next step. My younger daughter, who still has one more year of preschool, will be the same way. Every child should have that opportunity. It should not matter where they live, how much their parents earn, or what their abilities are. Every child needs the same opportunity for a strong start in school. I am urging you to invest today in early childhood education. It will make a world of difference in our community. It is time to take the action that has been needed for so long. I wholeheartedly support Bill 188. From Kristin McLean. Please add Bill 188 to the ballot and allow the people to decide. Quality early childhood education is critical for our society. Early childhood education sets the stage for a lifetime of learning. It helps our communities thrive and our nation remain competitively, competitive globally. Please do all you can to support our children. From Tricia Foster. As an early childhood educator for 20-plus years, I have witnessed what has just become blazingly apparent to our world recently. Early childhood care is essential to our whole society. The benefits our children receive when we generously invest in them early are immeasurably. Giving children a firm foundation, giving children a firm foundation to build a life creates better people, who create better communities, which creates a better world. Without available quality early childhood education for their children, parents are not physically, mentally, or emotionally able to work. If people can't work, our economy can't work. Now more than ever, people truly realize the vital and complex role all teachers play in their lives. For far too long, teachers have willingly sacrificed their time, talent, and tokens with limited resources, finances, and support. Early childhood educators and centers have had to sacrifice the most and have received the least. I believe people now understand there is a need to invest more in ECE. They just need the opportunity to be heard. Placing Bill 188 on the ballot gives them that opportunity. I support Bill 188. Please place this measure on the ballot so we can make excellent early childhood education a part of our new normal. And from Linda Crenning. I live at 7200 Christopher. I am writing to you about 7190 Christopher. I wanted to congratulate Dr. Sam Page for winning the primary on August 4th and to thank Beth Orwick, Gail Schott, and our councilman Ernie Trakus for all their help with 7190 Christopher. It has been a long process, and I am glad they can see that Montenegro presented this as a group home when it is a medical treatment center in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Montenegro, from the very beginning, was planning to put 19 parking spaces in front of a single-family home, and recently we found out they are still trying to purchase surrounding homes for this medical treatment center. We will all still remain vigilant to their next move or plan that they might try. Our neighborhood has too much at stake to allow this to happen.
Following from Kara Hannick. I want to note my support for Bill 188. This bill is good for children, good for parents, and good for our region. Children, it stimulates children's early learning and school engagement. Investing in early childhood education now prevents us from having to spend later on addressing poor behavior through crime prevention, assistance, and incarceration. Parents, consistent education for young children allows parents to work more productively. Parents also receive additional support from school communities. Communities, access to quality childcare and education attract home buyers and increase value of, you know, of our neighborhoods. It is imperative that we invest in our children now to create a greater, a greater future for our region. Thank you, Kara Hannick. From Kim Gifford. I'm writing today to show my support for Bill 188. As a parent and resident of St. Louis County, high-quality early childhood education is important to me and my family. Ages zero to five is a time in a child's development that is crucial for building a good foundation for social, emotional skills that will follow the child through their entire life. Skills learned during this time set up a child for a more successful experience in K through 12 education and beyond. Unfortunately, because of the cost, not all families are able to afford this education. It is often the families who are most at risk of falling between the cracks who struggle to pay for high-quality early childhood education. I urge you to make educating all young children with high-quality early education a priority in our region. Thanks for taking the time to read my thoughts. Please consider passing this Bill 188. From Ben Yushitel. Council members, early childhood education programs are essential learning foundations, yet to pay for them with a half-cent sales tax is to gravely harm the very families you are trying to help. By their very nature, sales taxes are regressive. Adding another half-cent tax would put St. Louis County overall at a 10% or more total sales tax. That's extremely regressive and puts us in an unenviable position of being the highest among the highest in the nation. For lower-income people, a 10% sales tax hurts them the hardest, hurts them every time they go to buy groceries. And remember, adequate food is as essential for a young child as early childhood education. What to do? Please consider a property tax as a fair way to go, or look into exempting groceries from sales tax, as at least 11 states already do. Please consider. Please do the equitable thing for funding early childhood education. Thank you, Ben Yushitel. From Kevin Wyndham. Greetings, Madam Chair and Council Members. My name is Kevin Wyndham Jr., and I'm writing to the council because I am concerned with the Diversity and Inclusion Department within the County Executive's Administration, as well as the Diversity and Inclusion Unit in the St. Louis County Police Department. Over the past few months, there have been multiple media reports regarding the lack of diversity, equity, and inclusion within St. Louis County government. The commander of the Police Department's Diversity and Inclusion Unit, Keith Wildhaber, has publicly stated that he has no formal education or experience in the field of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and is destroying an already tattered climate of racial inclusion externally and internally. Wildhaber's lack of expertise is problematic, however overshadowed by the fact that he has berated black officers and the Ethical Society of Police both privately and publicly, including a July 9th Board of Police Commissioners meeting. On July 31st, Wildhaber took to the media to convey that he had asked to be transferred from the Diversity and Inclusion Unit back to the Patrol Division. But within weeks, he went back to the media, saying that he would remain the commander of the Diversity and Inclusion Unit after a conversation with Chief Parton and Deputy Chief Gregory. This, this matter is yet another hit to the police community relationship in St. Louis County, especially the minority community. I believe that having transparency in county government is vital, especially as it relates to diversity and inclusion. Almost immediately after the August primary election, I began hearing rumors that the Director of the County Executive's Diversity and Inclusion, Inclusion Department, Hazel Erby, was being relieved of some of her duties and that the Deputy Director no longer worked in the department. Director Erby has garnered trust in the community for decades, and we deserve to know exactly what is going on in that department, including goals for the future as she nor the Diversity and Inclusion should be outlined. Both the County Executive's Diversity and Inclusion Department and the Police Department's Diversity and Inclusion Unit should be staffed with more employees. The County Executive's Diversity and Inclusion Department and the Police Department's Diversity The County Executive's Diversity and Inclusion Department is comprised of six employees, including the Director, according to the website, and the Police Department is only two. There should be enough employees in the Diversity and Inclusion Department to provide proactive strategies throughout county government. Following from Sherry Bowles. Help us. We are here serving families and children every day, making a difference in our communities. We need support. The schools are closed due to COVID, but we are open to still provide quality education to our children so that our parents can work and the children are not left behind. We need financial support. Our teachers deserve higher wages. Teachers in childcare are working with lower wages than the school district. Thank you so much, Sherry Bowles.
Continuing with the comments, next one is from Melissa Nert. I am a mother of three school-aged children, an early childhood program administrator, and a Brentwood School Board member. I am writing today because I have seen the overwhelming advantages high-quality early childhood education can provide, and I want to ensure that every child has access to those programs. When children have access to high-quality early experiences, they enter kindergarten with the skills and knowledge that will set them up for a lifetime of positive educational experiences. I do not believe that this must be a one-size-fits-all approach. High-quality educational experiences can follow so many different models and schedules. Parents should have the freedom to choose a program that works for their child, their schedule, and their lives. What should be guaranteed is that all of those options are affordable, accessible, and high-quality. I am also here today because I believe in teachers. Early childhood educators deserve to be paid a living wage. When parents can't afford a spot for their child and teachers don't earn enough to pay their bills, the system is truly broken. Teachers in all types of childcare settings need access to high-quality professional development, assessment tools, and resources to share with their families. They are the frontline in ensuring the future social and economic success of our county and deserve the respect and compensation that accompanies that level of responsibility. I am excited about the future of education in St. Louis County. I see the hard work being put in every day, now more than ever, and I believe we must prioritize funding and access so that all our children can become their best future selves. Next comment is from Johanna Bodine. As a resident, taxpayer, and parent in St. Louis County, I am opposed to an additional half-percent sales tax to support a fund to pay for daycare. Furthermore, I expect the City Council to answer with specificity, excuse me, relevant data and thresholds, not vague statements of safety, how they will encourage and support the school districts to open for five full in-person days. It seems there's been action to support online learning through the CARES funds, but no action to support the thousands of children with disabilities in St. Louis County who are being denied access to free and adequate public education, F A P E, as well as being in violation of I D E A. Focus on getting our children back a real in-person education and quit focusing on daycare and increased taxes. That's not what your constituents or our children need right now. Thank you. Next comment is from Vanessa Pemblot. I am a mother of two, ages four and five. My husband and I, like a lot of parents out there, had to make hard financial decisions in order to provide our children with quality early childhood care. We knew that providing our children with a warm, supportive, and diverse learning environment was our number-one priority, which is why we decided to enroll into our local public school early childhood education program. We are so thankful for the care and support of our teachers and staff. We absolutely love our school. However, we also recognize what a financial sacrifice it has been for us and the limited financial support available to families. I truly believe we are doing our communities and society a disservice if we do not invest in our youngest members, if we do not provide each family the same quality and support for their children. My vision is for each child in the St. Louis region to be nurtured and supported equally, regardless of their parents' tax bracket. I support Bill 188, and I hope you do, too. Next statement is from Jade Vendite. I am writing in support of Bill 188. Please add this measure to the ballot. It's mind-blowing that we must work so hard to make early childhood education a right for all members of our community. This is an undisputed critical time in a person's development. As a household with two working professionals, family support, and employers that supported twelve-week maternity leaves for both my children, also an issue that must be addressed, the cost of quality childcare during our children's most critical years has been absolutely absurd and debilitating at times. We've even considered moving to a community with lower cost of living just to be able to afford the quality of ECE care needed for our two children, both with medical needs. But even more than that, this is an issue of equity. If we ever hope to have a more fair and equitable society, we must address this issue. Investment in early childhood education and support saves money later that would go towards incarceration, crime response, and government assistance programs. When caregivers have access to childcare and support, their productivity is increased, demonstrated by fewer missed days and work of pursuing further education. Thank you to those working on this critical issue, and thank you to those who are open to changing their previous positions to support this work. Next comment from Molly Heckenberg. Hi, my name is Molly Heckenberg, and I am a St. Louis County resident and voter who would like to see Bill 188 on the ballot this fall. As an educator and mother of five, ages five months, four, seven, nine, and eleven, I have experienced the benefits and financial burden of quality early childhood education. I would love more children to have this opportunity and preparation for school success, which will benefit individual families as well as our whole region. As we consider together how best to move forward in these difficult times, providing resources to help our children is surely an important place to start. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next public comment is from Meg Boyko. High-quality early childhood education doesn't exist without the commitment of trained and caring professionals and community effort. A high-quality childcare system that is accessible to all requires significant investment, but its benefits go far beyond the children in it. It increases potential and productivity in workplaces, schools, and neighborhoods. As a working parent, I believe there is no better way to support economic growth than ensuring families have access to high-quality early childhood education. Even with resources, choosing a childcare provider that I could trust with both the well-being and education of my children, now eleven and fourteen, was overwhelming. I remember struggling with the decision. However, I look back and realize I was fortunate to have a decision to make. I did not have to simply accept what was there in order to continue putting food on our table and a roof over our heads, like many parents do. My children continue to learn and grow, even during a pandemic, in large part due to the foundation they received in early childhood education. My career has continued because of their early childhood education. Think of the possibilities if this was the case for more families in our region. I support Bill 188, and I hope you will, too. From Kate Ron. I am writing in support of Bill 188. I have experienced the early childhood system in St. Louis as both a parent and an ECE provider. As such, I can tell you firsthand that it is not working well for most. The majority of parents are struggling to find affordable, accessible care that meets their needs. The ECE workforce is underpaid and lacks the support needed to thrive as educators and individuals. Our system desperately needs increased to truly begin addressing these gaps. I am forever grateful for the ECE providers who cared for and nurtured our two boys while my husband and I worked. We must invest in a system that creates these opportunities for all and values this critical work. Our children, families, and ECE programs deserve more. From Abby Rothley. My name is Abby Rothley, and I am a resident of St. Louis County, writing to you today in support of Bill 188. My family lives in University City and includes two small children who have benefited from early childhood care. Early childhood care allows my husband and I to continue working and pursuing our passions while also doing the very important job of being parents. If not for early childhood care, I, their mother, would assume the role of full-time caregiver. Nobody wants that. I love my children more than my own life, but that love doesn't mean I should forfeit forever parts of myself that are just for me. Early childhood care, and only early childhood care, allows me to restore these parts. This is crucial for my mental health, which in turn benefits my family and community. But this is just my story, and I am extremely lucky because I can afford to alter my story. My family can pay the loads of money it costs to send our children to school. I do not want to imagine a story where I couldn't access early childhood care, because that story does not have a happy ending. To know this for sure, all I have to do is look around me. Anyone who is paying attention can see all the inequities and harm created by the ever-expanding divide between the haves and have-nots in our region. It is gross, unfair, racist, classist, and completely fixable. If you care even a tiny bit about yourself, your family, your neighbors, the future of St. Louis County, and our country, you will support this bill. When we choose to invest in our youngest children, ages zero to five, everyone wins. When parents have access to childcare, their productivity increases, obviously. When communities have access to early childhood care, property values increase, which attracts home buyers. Further, investment in early childhood education now saves money that would later go towards incarceration, crime response, and government assistance programming. Access to early childhood care surely helps bridge the divide that is completely random between the haves and have-nots. A necessity should never be treated as a luxury. If you care, you will say yes to supporting adults who do the most important job of caring for our youngest children. You will say yes to supporting Bill 188. From Hannah Shanks. I write in support of Bill 188. The inequities of our region have been thrown into relief by the impacts of COVID-19. I hope the council will seize this opportunity to invest in the future and support children and families. Early childhood education, ECE, is an equity powerhouse, allowing children and caregivers across the socioeconomic spectrum to achieve greater financial stability and goals. Access to early childhood education allowed our family to thrive, but it wasn't easy to find, nor easy to finance. When my son entered early childhood care in Ellisville in 2015, it cost us one hundred and thirty-three percent of our mortgage payment each month. While we loved that center, we chose it largely because it was one of very few that were accepting new enrollees. Our choice was extremely limited. The cost of that care barely outweighed the income of my white-collar job at a philanthropic organization in Ladue. As a result, after nine months, I stepped out of the formal workforce for eighteen months to serve as my son's primary caregiver. My family lost out on that lost income, and I, in particular, will carry that legacy of lost income and earning potential forward. This catch-22 of income loss keeps families poorer and falls much more heavily on women and families of color. Accessible ECE builds strong families, strong kids, and strong communities. Enacting this proposal allows us to finally take meaningful forward movement based on the research of numerous region-wide investigations, including the Ferguson Commission. Investing in ECE will create leadership in our region by allowing more caregivers to succeed. It allows us to educate early rather than incarcerate later. A strong investment in ECE makes for a community that thrives for children, caregivers, and employers. From Joy Weiss Maul. Maul. I support Bill 188. I've never been a parent and never had to face the difficult choices that families with children make. I am a community member, and I care about my friends and neighbors. Childcare most impacts me directly when I encounter parents in their workplaces. Parents do their best work when they know their children are safe and learning. Twenty years from now, I will care that today's children became young adults who are well-educated, well-adjusted, and happy contributors to our shared community. That's my vision for the St. Louis region, and it begins when making sure that our children are ready and eager to begin kindergarten.
Continuing from Ron Crenning. I'm writing to you about my concern about the property at 7190 Christopher. I really appreciated that after all these months, our St. Louis County Council is going to look into what Montenegro is really trying to do with the property right next to my home. This property is not right for a medical treatment center and doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. Montenegro recently called a few of our neighbors to see if they would be interested in selling their homes so they would have more space for parking. Goes to show that they are still trying to get this through and approved, but our council is aware of their tactic. I want to thank your St. Louis County Council, Ernie Trakus, and Dr. Sam Page for taking a deeper look into this matter. Thank you. From David Duckworth. My name is David Duckworth. I live at St. Louis County District Three, and I'm an elementary school principal at public school in the Parkway School District. I'm writing to urge the council to support Ready by Five's measure for early childhood education funding and to ensure that it is put on the ballot for November. I cannot stress enough the difference that early childhood education can make to ensure that students are prepared to be successful in school, especially those whose families may have fewer resources and opportunities. Students who have gone to a quality preschool are better prepared to learn and succeed in their classroom, and their parents can achieve job security and stability, knowing their childcare needs will be met. I've witnessed the positive impact of early childhood education in my own family with my three children, and I want to see our county expand opportunities to ensure that everyone has access to quality education, regardless of their income level. We already do this with great public schools in St. Louis County. It's time to expand our offerings to our youngest children, knowing that we invest in the years from birth to age five will be of great benefit, not only to the children and their parents, but to our community at large. The Hekman equation indicates a thirteen-percent return on investment for birth-to-five early childhood education, which means that our tax dollars will be well-spent in breaking the cycle of poverty in our region. We will see stronger families, higher employment numbers, and greater student success, simply by investing in our children at this crucial point in their lives. This is a strong preventative measure against crime and poverty, and it will benefit St. Louis families and schools. I hope to see support across partisan lines on our council as you move forward to vote this initiative onto November's ballot. Thank you, David Duckworth. From Audrey Nemeth. I'm writing in support of Bill 188. Please pass Bill 188. It is way beyond time for St. Louis to start investing in early childhood education. Our communities, families, economy, and children will benefit. When we invest in our children, we are creating long-term positive economic impacts. Property values increase in areas with quality early childhood education. As an early childhood educator in the field of deaf education for thirteen years, I have seen firsthand the benefits and long-term effects of quality early childhood education. The earlier children are provided with quality early childhood education, the better chance they will be ready for high school, college, and life. Most critical time for growth is between ages zero and five. When provided with a nurturing, stimulating, and educational environment, children are able to reach their greatest potential. I urge you to let families speak in November. Please make our children a priority. Sincerely, Audrey Nemeth. From Amber Willis. I'm in writing in support of Bill 188. I was born and raised in St. Louis. However, I moved away for college in the years following. After getting married, my husband and I decided to move back to St. Louis because I knew it was a great place to put down family roots. I'm a mother of two who, like many moms, has given what has had to cost and benefits in my career versus the cost of childcare. As an educator with a stretched salary, I had to make the hard decision to leave my career to care for my own children. As residents of St. Louis County, we also had to deal with long waitlists, varying rates, little assistance, and minimal flexibility. It was a devastating decision to have to make, but it felt like the only real option. Not every mom is in a situation to leave Not every mom is in a situation to leave her job and still be able to make ends meet with a part of her salary and support. We see our privilege in this situation and many others as a direct result of this decision. Many families have fewer options, whether it be because of availability, finances, et cetera. Funding early childhood education is a gift to our families and to the roots, is necessary to better the stability and standards of our public schools as well as our communities. It's time for St. Louis to make its reality match the narrative we raise about it. We need to prioritize families. Please pass Bill 188. Let families use their vote and voice in November. From Nava Cantor. It's never been more apparent how vital early childhood education is, both to families and to the functioning of our whole economic system. While a high-quality childcare system that is accessible to all requires significant investment, ultimately, it's beneficial to our whole community and economic system. This is borne out by studies demonstrating that financial investments in early childhood education are more than returned in the long run by greater educational attainment and income of the kids who receive it. If the importance of improving our childcare system was not clear enough before, the COVID pandemic has put it into stark perspective. Families across the region are struggling to survive both financially and emotionally and will need safe, reliable care for their children before they can return to work and begin to get back on their feet. If ever there was a time to invest in our childcare system, this is it.
Continuing with the comments from Kelsey Tinkum. My husband and I are a dual-career couple who moved from the city to the county when our oldest was one-year-old. As our family has grown, we've learned to treasure this community and all the ways St. Louis County continues to make commitments to families. It truly is a great place to raise our kids and contribute to our community. The challenges facing early childhood care in ages zero to five are stark, and in the system as a whole needs dramatic help so that families can continue to thrive in being good stewards and employees in your county, as well as developing their children with incredible support. When we had our first child, one of us was still in grad school and the other was in a low-paying job. We recognized that the large budget percentage towards childcare was an investment in our future as well as our kids' future. We were also committed to finding a childcare center with diversity in race and socioeconomic, and were naive to how hard that would be. We were lucky to find a good center at a lower-than-average rate due to massive grant support. It didn't fully hit on the desire for diversity, though. Unfortunately, the fiscal volatility of that model led to the closing of our center. Since then, two other centers in the same thriving region of our city have closed for the same reason. Upon that closing, we learned about the immense challenges facing ECEs. At most centers, the seemingly sky-high cost we pay for infant rooms does not cover the actual cost and operate in the red for their infant-to-two-year-old rooms. At the three-year-old mark, the developmental needs of the children change such that student-teacher ratios increase, and they can recoup some of those costs. But with the flood of quality district-based and subsidized pre-Ks, many ECEs are having trouble filling their three-to-five-year-old rooms. Thus, the model of the infant-to-pre-K ECE center has become even more unstable. All kids ages zero to five should have great early childhood education opportunities. Please support putting Bill 188 on and help families all over our county by making ECE obtainable, affordable, and sustainable. There is no greater investment that will have a greater ROI. Next comment is from Ellen Shapiro. I am writing on behalf of the Early Childhood Education Initiative. This initiative was developed through tremendous research and great input from the community about the need for quality early childhood education programs and teachers. This proposed modest tax increase is the quickest and most viable path to get zero-to-five-year-olds and those that education them accessibility and resources. The pandemic has only highlighted the need for ECE programs and the racial inequity prevalent in ECE programs. When we invest in early childhood education, ECE, our community realizes long-term economic impacts. Research bears out the fact that money invested in ECE saves money that would go towards future incarceration, government programs, and rehabilitation. It also increases parental productivity in the workforce. Money invested in ECE improves outcomes for children because zero-to-five is a time of crucial growth and development. Children who have access to nurturing, stimulating, and educational spaces have a greater chance of reaching their fullest potential. Being ready for school by five means that children will have a better chance to be ready for high school, college, and life. Right now, ECE is unaffordable for many families. Even those with parents who work and a family's income should not prevent their children from the opportunity to learn and grow. Please vote to put this on the ballot so that all of our children have the same opportunity to thrive. Excuse me. Next comment is from Sarah Buckeye. I am writing to express my support for Bill 188, the Early Childhood Economic Development Tax. We have spent most of our lives in the St. Louis region, and we are raising a family here in St. Louis County. We are a pair millennials, just barely, who both work for large employers in the St. Louis region, and our family has directly benefited from quality childcare that we have assessed. We have seen our daughter's social, emotional, and academic development blossom, and believe well-trained, consistent staff that can apply the latest research-based education strategies for children across the region will benefit all families immensely. We want to live in a region that equitably supports access to early childhood services, and we are not unique in this desire. Developing strong regional childcare resources will attract homebuyers, increase property values, and make St. Louis more attractive for young talent and employment searches. We are tired of St. Louis falling behind other cities that attract talent due to the lack of collaboration to make visionary systemic change and be an early adopter rather than late to the pack. We know this is possible in St. Louis and critically important to the region. COVID-19 has only emphasized the economic and racial disparities in the region, and Bill 188 is a tide that can lift all boats. In 2000, the Obama administration published a study on the economics of early childhood investments, which noted the existing research suggests expanding early learning initiatives would provide benefits to society of roughly $8.60 for every $1 spent, about half of which comes from increased earnings for children when they grow up. As a financial professional, I will note there aren't many public investments the council could make that would provide this type of return for county residents. This investment will also save money diverted from future crime, incarceration, or government assistance. Research has also shown that parents who have access to childcare and support have increased productivity, which includes pursuing further education. After working at home due to COVID-19 with both of our children for over six months now and previous childcare challenges, we can affirmatively attest to this. Please support all children in the St. Louis region on a bill that provides an excellent long-term investment return for all county residents. Next comment is from Kimberly Stevens. For months now, St. Louis County has sat back and watched as interim county executive Sam Page has shut down our schools, businesses, churches, and youth sports. In March, we were told that this shutdown was vital in order to flatten the curve of COVID-19. Finally, after months of staying home, businesses, churches, and sports were allowed to slowly reopen. However, last month, interim county executive Page decided that youth sports were behind the rising COVID numbers in our area. Without any actual data to back him up, he shut down all youth sports. After being asked to provide statistical data to back these claims, the best interim Page could do was to make ridiculous claims, such as that parents carpooling was one of the reasons youth sports were so dangerous to our community. Interim Page's own task force admitted there were no actual numbers to support his claims. Most recently, interim Page announced that late-night bars were now the cause of the rising COVID numbers in our area. No longer were youth sports to blame. Instead, he decided to close all restaurants and bars after 10:00 p.m. Once again, interim Page continues to make decisions based simply on a whim. His claims of contact tracers and testing are nothing but a farce. We, as voters, can no longer stand by as ridiculous decisions such as these are made by interim county executive Page. Interim county executive Page clearly considers himself to be the dictator of St. Louis County with no one to answer to other than himself. Excuse me. Next statement from Ed Golderman. Honorable members of the council and honorable executive Page, before coronavirus deepened economic stress on government and citizens, the burdens of the five zoo museums, district taxes on property should have been lifted. And there are now 120 miles of great rivers, greenways, biking, and walking trails. Lift these burdens now for immediate economic relief. Don't let it be read from an opened time capsule 100 years from now. This place and these people went bankrupt while still paying for zoos, museums, trolleys, convention centers, and sports palaces. Thank you. Continuing with comments from Rachel Proudy. As a career-long educator, I am excited discussions on expanding early childhood education are being had and seriously considered. Unfortunately, the sales tax proposal is rife with issues. I am writing to urge and request a committee of the whole to thoroughly discuss Council Bill 188. Bill 188 seeks to establish another bureaucracy of money distribution. Building a new system would be redundant. When public ECE systems are already in place, we should be funding those. Frankly, it is shameful to push this forth without robust input from local school districts, elected boards, and superintendents who are currently trying to figure out how to restart schools safely. Also, the board of this new, currently nameless organization would not be elected, yet would be spending public tax money. In addition, the proposal currently specifies only one educator, who may not even be an early childhood educator, serve as a member of the board. Even more concerning, there is currently no plan for oversight once the funds are distributed. Every school district has an elected board who hires a superintendent, who then hires the early childhood director, who hires the teachers. There is public accountability throughout this process. How can the public be sure a group of non-elected, non-educator board members have the expertise or even the will to ensure a private childcare facility, for example, is appropriately using the grant? Here is the thing. St. Louis County should not be perpetuating the nonprofit industrial complex by diverting public money into private hands through foundations and allowing corporations to mask their exploitative practices through philanthropic work. Good intentions are no substitute for prudent, transparent, honest policymaking. From Pat Holterman-Hams. I am proud to serve as CEO for Youth in Need, a nonprofit organization that changes lives for children, youth, and families throughout eastern Missouri through early childhood education, foster care, mental health counseling, and housing and other support for youth and young adults experiencing homelessness. Youth in Need has a vision of equitable opportunities so children, youth, and families in our region can thrive. Youth in Need supports Bill 188 wholeheartedly. The first five years of a child's life are the most crucial to their development. Quality early childhood programs partner with families to ensure young children enter kindergarten ready for learning and life. Being ready for school at age five means children have a better chance to be ready for high school and college, too. The investments in young children will have a tremendous positive impact on the futures of children, families, and communities. Please join me in being a champion for children and supporting Bill 188. From Dottie Bailey. The past six months in St. Louis County, we have witnessed an extraordinary time. Hardships of every nature has hit all of us. Many have lost their jobs, their companies strained or closed, parents scrambling to educate their children, hard decisions being made, and so much more. The county's decision to possibly put another sales tax on the people of this great county is distressing and tone-deaf to the needs of the people. A regressive sales tax at this time couldn't be more harmful to the elderly on a fixed income and those in the lower tax brackets under $34,000 a year. In some sections of St. Louis County, the total state and county sales tax hits 11%. St. Louis County unfortunately has a history of pay-for-play, contracts for friends and donors, and now it seems a proposed tax with the price tag of $80 million a year with no end date benefits friends of Councilwoman Clancy. The county cares budget included $5.9 million to childcare relief, yet despite efforts to find and encourage daycare centers to apply, they only received $1.8 million in requests. St. Louis County already provides the following for early childhood services. 694 licensed daycares. 444 childcare centers serving 35,732 children. 113 family homes serving 1,096 children. 10 group homes serving 177 children. 119 licensed exempt providers serving 8,516 children. Totalling 45,521 children served. 54 pre-K programs in our school districts and the special school district. So why this new tax? Who is screaming for it, especially when we are in a crisis and have substantial childcare already in the county? The bill comes from the Ready by Five organization. Their demand letter is on their website. They originally wanted $20 million from the county's cares funds. Now they are seeking this permanent tax. Chairwoman Clancy is on the Ready by Five Design Council. This is how bad government functions, and no one seems the wiser. Tax revenue to benefit friends of government officials is appalling. I find this grotesque and unethical at the minimum. The bill states the tax board will be voluntary with no compensation. But a few sections down, it states that 25% of the tax, 20 million, will be used for staff and administration. No details, oversight, parameters, nothing. Government in charge of unspecified tax dollar money needs no introduction or storyline. There are many other issues with this bill that I could spell out, but 400 words won't permit a deep, detailed look. And I'll stop there because we're at 400 words. From Teri Deloge. I would like to remind you of your press conference, and this is directed at Dr. Sam Page. I would like to remind you of your press conference in which you were promoting remote learning, and you said you would definitely do something to provide for the children, teens, with special needs. Was this just a campaign promise before the primary? St. Louis County Special School District is offering online learning for children who have special needs. Have you ever spent more than two minutes with a child, teen, or adult with special needs? Learning online is not an option. Other counties are making these marginalized children their first priority by allowing this demographic to go back to school in person. What is your plan to assist parents with special needs? You said you would not forget these children in your press conference. Did you lie? I hope not. I am totally against a sales tax being put on the November 3 ballot to raise sales tax 1/2% for early childhood care and buildings. St. Louis has one of the highest sales tax in the country, over 10%. This is not the job of taxpayers. From Casey Foskell. Eight years ago, pregnant and concerned about what life as a St. Louis business owner and becoming a new mom would be like, I happened into a local child development center two blocks from my place of business. Walking in, every bit of unease of how I was going to be a professional working mother was put to rest. Urban Sprouts Child Development Center became our village. Now, having had two children grow- Now having had two children grow through the facility, I can speak on the power and impact I see in my own children on their growth and development more than I could ever have ever given them on my own. Each day, they live in, learn and experience their own part of the world, guided, loved, nurtured and guarded by phenomenal teachers and caring adults. They emerge proud, powerful, confident and independent. When my now second grader entered kindergarten, she walked into that new school armed with the tools and skills needed to embark on this new journey. Having ECE access has also afforded me the opportunity to focus on my professional career and confidently grow my small business. Over the last eight years, I have become intimately involved with our center and they are a big part of my community. I see my own eyes, the absolute, I see with my own eyes, the absolute necessity to have ECE available to all children in our communities. These educators need to be held in the highest regard, both professionally and financially. Parents of all economic backgrounds should have the opportunity to receive that warm welcome and feeling of confidence that I had in having access to ECE. As a society, the success of our economy is resting on the backs of our children and educators. It is beyond time we support them. Our children, our families, our communities and our society will all benefit from robust investment and support of ECE. I support Bill 188.
And I'm Chair continuing, excuse me, from Cortasia Collin. Recent events have shed light on the importance of investment in and equitable access to high quality early childhood education. Statistics are compelling, but my support comes from personal experience. Listen to a tale of two sons. As a teen mother, I did not understand the importance of providing my son with access to high quality early childhood education. I just needed someone to watch him while I finished high school. I sent him to a neighborhood babysitter where he sat in front of the television for hours on end. I worked part-time and could not afford the cost of daycare, so I chose the only option I knew. This decision was to his detriment. When he started school, he was academically and socially delayed. This delay resulted in deviant behavior to deflect from his inability to keep up with his peers. Eventually, he engaged in recreational drug use, gang activity and multiple encounters with the law. If you wonder if an early childhood experience could have deterred this behavior, the answer is a resounding yes. Early childhood education would have provided structure, consistency and a sense of belonging my son sought. Not only that, early childhood providers do more than educate children. Quality providers would have given me the tools and resources I needed to become a better parent. I lacked the village required to raise a child and early childhood could have been a part of that for me and changed the trajectory of my son's life. Ten years later, when my second son was born, I provided this experience for him. He was reading at four years old, graduated from Christian Brothers College High School and attended Southeast Missouri State University. He didn't require any social services, language skills were at a collegiate level in middle school and he has had no run-ins with the law. He too was a St. Louis County taxpayer as well. Investment early childhood education is an investment in families and community. If you want to ensure less crime, less poverty and fewer adverse childhood experiences, then invest in early childhood education. If you want to do your part in ending systemic racism nearing the wealth and achievement gaps, then support Bill 188. As a parent, educator and taxpayer, I emphatically support Bill 188 and encourage others to do the same. Following from Casey Lucy. Accessible early childhood education is essential for children and families. Dedicated public funding is vital to ensure that all families have access to quality care for their children and that early childhood educators can afford to live. Adults who care for children in their earliest years should have the support they need to care for our kids. Apparently, families are struggling to afford childcare while early childhood educators are often struggling with low wages and no benefits. The COVID-19 pandemic has only exacerbated. In addition to affordability, accessible childcare needs to meet the diverse needs of families. For example, many families need childcare for their children under the age of three and some families need childcare during non-traditional hours so they can work. Childcare centers and home-based childcare providers that meet these types of needs for families need dedicated public funding to be able to provide quality early childhood education, too. These private and nonprofit childcare settings meet the needs of families that the public schools cannot. These centers have always operated on razor-thin margins and COVID-19 may tip many of them into permanent closure. They need additional funding during the crisis and into the future. Investment early childhood education and support saves money later that would go towards incarceration, prime response and government assistance program. I support Bill 188. Please add the measure to the ballot for the people to decide. From Jeannie Flowers. Hello. I'm writing today in support of County Bill 188. My family benefited from many public and private partnerships which have provided early childhood experiences for our three children over the last 13 years. Private institutions like St. Joseph Institute for the Deaf became a place for us to receive services related to hearing laws and to interact with peers. Public school programs like Rockwood School District have provided early learning environments and created long-lasting relationships. Rockwood School District's Parents' Teachers Program gave me the confidence and guidance that I needed as a new mom. I was lucky to have the same parent educator support me through the early childhood experiences of all three of my children. Relationship is one we will always treasure as she taught us how to set up our children, how to set our children up for a lifetime of learning through play. Without the support of Missouri First Steps and the Associated Therapists, my youngest son would not have achieved many of his milestones as a confident six-year-old about to enter first grade. Despite his diagnosis of a rare genetic condition, potential for lifelong struggles, the early learning he has received has propelled him to a point where he is confident and can socialize and interact with his peers in a mainstream classroom. I call you, members of the county council, to join me in imagining a world where all children and families are afforded these rich early childhood opportunities. Bill 188, which has been informed by brilliant community organizers and grassroots collaboration from the public and private sector, will move us in that direction. I also share comments today from my perspective as a professional early childhood special educator. I've spent the last 15 years working with children in St. Louis who are deaf and hard of hearing as an early interventionist and speech-language pathologist. While my expertise was working with children who had additional needs, I saw every day the need to support families where they were at and often that meant helping them learn how to play with their child or engage their child in everyday routines. We see the communities with robust early childhood education systems thrive. What's been good for us could be good for all. We will all be better if we ensure that childhood education is a universal privilege in our region. Thank you. From Kate Stratton. Last week, a bill was discussed to put a sales tax on the November 3 ballot to raise the sales tax one half percent for early childhood care and buildings. And I remind you that St. Louis has one of the highest sales tax in the country over 10%. The Children's Service Fund shows how much sales tax revenue is coming in. I would suggest that, that in no way does the county need another tax. It is dishonest and children should not be used to pass another tax. If you want this program, you should include it in the children's fund tax. It seems that the progressive left of the council wants to have another tax to keep funding their cradle-to-grave mentality. One of your jobs as county executive is to budget. Because of forced business closures or tax bases shrinking, why not allow businesses to reopen instead of raising taxes? Wearing masks are so effective to stop the spread of the virus, why are we still going backwards and opening businesses? Either masks work or they don't, which isn't. St. Louis County should value our children with special needs and younger kids can't attend, excuse me, special needs and younger kids that can't attend to online learning. Kids with special needs in St. Louis County are suffering along with their family. In Tennessee, public schools are allowing all kids with special needs, K through five, to go to school five days a week and middle school and upper school are going two days a week. It is so selfish of you, Sam Page, to harm children like you are doing. Again, if masks are the answer, then why can't kids go back to school? Either masks work or they don't, which isn't. Sincerely, Kate Stratton. The following is from Lisa Brown. I'm a resident voter in St. Louis County. I'm writing in support of Bill 188. I want to see early childhood education, ECE, funding for our region. My husband and I have three children, ages 13, 10 and 6, and we have seen firsthand the positive impact of a quality ECE program. My husband is a pediatrician and he knows what a difference that early childhood education makes in preparing children for school and future learning. It is not fair that only the financially privileged should experience what our children have. We want to see resources put toward ECE so that everyone can benefit. Thank you for your consideration.
Continuing with the comments. Next comment is from Lindsay Cantor, Julia Mackey and Laqua Ashanti. It's never been more apparent how vital early childhood education is, both to families and to the functioning of our whole economic system. As the parents of a six-year-old and a three-year-old, my family has been unbelievably fortunate in having had the opportunity to send our kids to an exceptional childcare center, Urban Sprouts. My children, my kids have thrived there with caregivers who love them and have assured that they have, that they learn everything from emotional regulation to how to become thoughtful and contentious members of society. My children learned alongside peers from diverse racial and socioeconomic backgrounds because of Urban Sprouts' mission to make this opportunity available to families regardless of income. Meanwhile, it has allowed both my husband and I to continue to grow both of our careers. Unfortunately, we know just how rare this opportunity is in St. Louis. This kind of high-quality early childhood education doesn't just happen naturally. Caring for small, sometimes wild and crazy humans take intentionality, education, training and more than a bare minimum living wage. Early childhood educators are not merely babysitters. The skills and talent they have for their work deserves to be rewarded with a fair and appropriate salary. While a high-quality childcare system that is accessible to all requires significant investment, ultimately it's beneficial to our whole community and economic system. It's beneficial in the short term by making all of our communities across the region desirable places to live, attracting home buyers and increasing home values. Furthermore, I can personally attest that having had reliable, safe and quality care for my children allowed me to be productive and successful at work and ultimately have greater income and financial stability. This is borne out by studies demonstrating that financial investments in early childhood education are more than returned in the long run by greater educational attainment and income of the kids who receive it. If the importance of improving our childcare system was not clear enough before, the COVID pandemic has put it into stark perspective. Families across the region are struggling to survive both financially and emotionally and will need safe, reliable care for their children before they can return to work and begin to get back on their feet. If ever there was a time to invest in our childcare system, this is it. Please put it on November's ballot. Excuse me. Next comment is from Maxine Clark. If we have learned one thing from COVID, it is our tremendous support for our educators. It is virtually impossible for parents to work from home and also teach their children adequately. Zoom may be okay for older kids, but our littlest learners need more. They always have and St. Louis has not yet met the need. It's never been more apparent how vital early childhood education is, both to families and to the functioning of our whole economic system. As a founder of a large company in St. Louis that employs many parents, we know how much better our employees do when their children are in quality early childhood and K-12 setting, K through 12 settings. Having reliable, safe and quality care for their children allows parents to be more successful at work and ultimately have greater income and financial stability. This is especially true for working moms who often take on a larger share of the responsibilities where kids are concerned. When our employees first know they are going to have a child, they get on a waiting list because there are just not enough seats, especially for children zero to two. The sticker shock for childcare is also mind-boggling. Then the decision comes if it is worth it to work. When I asked employees what more we could do to support them, they often suggested creating an early childhood center of our own. They need more options, affordable ones. The problems that face St. Louis will not be solved by one answer, but we do know that children are our future and we must create a basis for families to be successful through quality education opportunities starting at birth. This tax will be minimal to a family. The average increase in retail sales tax would be about $150 a year per household. A small price to pay for our children and to make St. Louis a stronger community and one where families will want to raise their children for generations to come. I support Bill 188. Please add the measure to the ballot for the people to decide. Our children's future depends on. Next comment, excuse me, is from Keisha Kater. Everyone can agree that children are our future. We also could agree that we all want our children to grow up to be positive influences in society, to be good people and contribute in a productive way to the community and the world. Learning begins from the moment a baby is born. These early childhood years are critical learning years. Research from the World Health Organization shows that investment in early childhood is the most powerful investment a country can make as it yields returns over the life course many times the size of the original investment. Early childhood education has played a major role in the lives of my five children. I have relied on quality education and educators to partner with me and help each of my children learn and grow. We moved to St. Louis for the early education deaf and hearing loss services for my daughter. Services we received were great and we are grateful for them. What we noticed, though, was the large disparity in care driven by zip codes in St. Louis. We also noticed the high costs for quality education and the knowledge gap in children it creates. This inequality in education and socioeconomic resources impacts children, excuse me, and the projection of graduation, incarceration and crime. We need to do something about this. We need to provide affordable and quality education for all children, excuse me, regardless of their zip code. Early childhood education is critical. I support Bill 188, the Ready by Five campaign, and I hope you will as well. Next comment is from Tom Sullivan. Members of the council, the proposed legislation for early childhood education is perhaps the most convoluted ever brought to the council. Bill number 188 was designed by numerous organizations, most of whom would benefit from the proposal. It is both a slush fund and a blank check combined. It seems there would be no accounting by anyone and no oversight by the council. But the proposal is mainly about is providing free childcare in both St. Louis and St. Louis County. It covers the years zero to five. There is not much learning that can go on with an infant that's six months old or even one year, one year or two. I don't know of a single school district in St. Louis County that doesn't have an early childhood learning program and they start at age three. So there really is no need for the proposal. It is being promoted by those who benefit the most, the nonprofit industrial complex. The 185 million a year from the tax would provide quite a slush fund. This means high-paying jobs and any number of six-figure consulting fees for the organizations that are supporting it. The timing couldn't be worse. Many families are already having trouble putting food on their tables. We regularly see people waiting in long lines to get a box of groceries. We are about to see a record number of housing evictions. The council sponsors of the tax increase seem not to care about any of this, though they talk about social equality. they talk about social equality. Excuse me. Sales tax rates in St. Louis County are already among the highest in the country. County voters should reject another sales tax increase, especially one that isn't needed. Thank you for listening to my comments.
From Jamie Collier. The early education program in St. Louis County has made a huge difference for my family and my children's ability to be ready for kindergarten. It has helped them be prepared for what school will entail and has given me good pointers on how to work with them on age-appropriate activities and what we should be working towards next. From Jacqueline Person. Early childhood education is without a doubt a necessary component that increases opportunities for children to have thriving educational experiences and not just merely surviving the required years of education. I recently retired from education teaching elementary, middle, and high school public education 23 years. I have seen the evidence and the impact of students who experienced early childhood education versus those who did not attend. Students with early childhood experiences, on average, have higher expectations for themselves, are more self-confident, interact cooperatively with peers, and they typically are more ready for the required school years, both cognitively and emotionally. I support Bill 188. From Diane Unger. Interim Page. Once again, you have allowed the pandemic panic to overshadow any common sense, and more importantly, you are trying to use a pandemic panic to financially and further injure county residents for years to come. The idea of imposing additional sales tax on all county residents to, in your opinion, guarantee adequate childcare throughout the county is ludicrous. Perhaps you are not aware that most all public schools offer childcare, both before and after school. Perhaps you're not aware that the YMCA offers childcare. Perhaps you are not aware that many churches and places of worship offer childcare. More importantly, perhaps you are not willing to acknowledge that your efforts to shut down our city and our schools and our churches has become the real root of your financial problems. St. Louis County already suffers under one of the highest sales tax rates. We do not need to add to that burden. I have lately been reading about the so very many financial decisions that you have arbitrarily made without the transparency you tout. The list is long, has been very expensive for the county, and shows very little, if any, accountability for the expenditures. And now you want to make amendments to the charter to allow for a council attorney, an assistant council attorney, and additional clerical staff. Makes us wonder why are you anticipating legal troubles within your council? It's time for you to provide accountability. It's time for our county and our schools to fully open. We have been strapped down due to COVID numbers, on charts and reports, that are nearly impossible to understand and that are contradictory at best. St. Louis County residents deserve better than what we have been receiving. For Julie Wood. Please consent to put the early childhood education sales tax proposal developed by Ready by Five on the November ballot. Years of research and groundwork have gone into the recommendation. It's time to let the voters weigh in. The pandemic is making the inequities inherent in our educational system even more apparent. As a community, we give a lot of lip service to the importance of our children, and yet we have not invested as if all children are our priority. A family's income shouldn't dictate whether their children have the opportunity to thrive. Research shows that children who have quality early education are more successful in the long term. They are more ready for school. They learn the positive behaviors that they can draw upon for the rest of their lives. Also, as a small business owner, I'm particularly interested in the fact that when parents have access to good childcare, they are more productive and miss less work. They have the opportunity to thrive within their careers. My husband and I were fortunate enough to be able to pay for quality childcare. It was the largest expense in our budget for many, many years. I was able to build my career because I had the support. I want to see it be available to all the families in the region. We can't thrive as a region until we invest in all of our children as if they were our own. And from Alan Harris Dalton. I write today concerning Bill 188, not to support a particular position, but to support an ethic of equity as you deliberate. I define equity as the tangible conditions of different groups being equal, not just in potential, but in lived reality. Our region continues to suffer from structural inequity rooted in policy decisions and personal choices. As our elected representatives, policy is your special purview. Sales taxes contribute to inequity because those of lower means spend more of their resources on purchases necessary for survival. Early childhood educational opportunities are perhaps the single strongest tool we've discovered for increasing lifelong equity. Low wages for childcare providers decrease equity. The high cost for quality care decreases equity. Missing years of productive work experience because it's cheaper to stay home with children than to continue working, this deepens inequity today and for the rest of one's life, and we see it especially affected talent, talented women. Important political choices are declared with a single syllable, yea or nay, but are never simple decisions. Today, you, and potentially in November, we, make a choice. I'm asking you and all of us to always consider equity at the top of our criteria. How will this policy impact those who struggle more, who work harder, who those in your seats too often forget? In my Christian tradition, we call them "the least of these," though I'll confess I hate the demeaning undertones of this phrase, preferring Matthew 25 people. In this scripture, we learn to ask, who is hungry or thirsty? Who is imprisoned or needs clothes? Who is sick? Who is an outsider needing welcome? Jesus is clear that he stands in solidarity with these people. He is clear that how we treat them is of ultimate concern. In God's kingdom, the least are the most important. In our region, we have learned to ask, who do we serve? Who do we protect? Who do we empower? Who do we seek out? Who do we hear? Who will benefit from this vote? And the answer is never everyone. Policy is complicated, and it matters. We have entrusted you with the responsibility to shape and enact policy for this county, and I, for one, am encouraging you to privilege equity as your ethical lodestar.
Continuing comments, excuse me, from Martha Duchal. How many times has the phrase "is for the kids" been used by adults to advance agendas that have no substantive benefit to kids, and in many cases, serve to achieve political gains for the adults? Bill Number 188 is a perfect example of the bait and switch, which ultimately does a disservice to those who are most vulnerable to these political gains. Our communities underserved children. This proposed legislation has all the ambiguity and opacity that made the afterlife of P such a disaster. We don't need another tax whose purposes are vaguely stated, whose aims are scattered among several different goals, whose funding mechanism would bring economic hardship to the, to the families of very people it's supposed to help. Rather than impose additional taxes on county residents, how about using funds already collected? If this bill serves to provide funds for economic development purposes, then use the county's economic development budget as a funding source. One place the county might want to start searching is the amount of tax abatements it awards its tips. These tax abatements have had a deleterious impact on public education funding in the county. Maybe it's time to reexamine allocations within the economic development budget rather than impose new taxes. If it's truly the will of the council to pursue the intended purposes of Bill 188, then the council needs to commit the resources it already has to attain them. With the interests of underserved children and their families in mind, I respectfully ask that the council vote no on Bill 188. My name is Jackie Gold. I'm a mom of two littles, Juno and Everly, former ECE teacher and education champion. I support Bill 188 with every fiber of my being as a parent and a community member. Thank you and our family, and some of the others are counting on your voice, support and advocacy for kids. Jackie Gold. From Stephanie Handy. When it comes to childcare and the love and affection of top of the, top of the grade A teaching, I feel as though we should be jumping through hoops to make sure our centers are well-equipped enough to continue guiding our children efficiently. While I felt like this for years, now during these trying times, my feelings have grown strong. I myself am a mother of a seven-month-year-old son, and I'm also, and I am also a current employee at Urban Sprouts CDC. With the help of my employee discount and youth in need, I'm able to have childcare for my son. I feel as the, as, as though he, excuse me, I feel as though, even though I appreciate the help of my family at Suburban, at Urban Sprouts, and the amazing people at Yin, I have the, the fact that I have to utilize them as childcare, as a childcare worker myself, is something that needs to change. We are responsible for shaping the minds and hearts of our young children, and yet a plethora of people just see us as babysit. One of the most critical time periods in child development and learning is from birth to five years old. The first five years of child development, childhood development is crucial to their health, well-being, and overall trajectory of, of their lives in a variety of ways. I hope you'll find in your hearts to try to understand that childcare and childcare providers are just as important as any other level in education. We need more funding and resources, not only that, but more support in general, so that we can build up these future doctors, lawyers, astronauts, military men and women, and et cetera, the right way. Thank you for your time. Stephanie Handy. From Megan Ron. I'm a small business owner with two small children, four and three years old. I have a flexible work schedule as I work out of my home, but I still choose to send my children to an early childhood center. I choose to do this because I believe the early childhood educators provide fundamental building blocks for my children's social and emotional well-being. I choose to send them because my children have thrived under the safety and of their educator. I have the ability to make that choice, but there are so many families who don't have access to a quality early childhood education. The child's social and emotional well-being should not be dependent on whether the, the child, excuse me, dependent on whether their parents can afford it. My son has experienced some developmental delays and therefore fallen behind his peers, both academically as well as socially. He has been fortunate enough to have amazing, high-quality teachers who advocated for his needs. His educators taught me how to advocate for my children and have taught me how to help my son. Without their help, he would not be receiving the help he needs to catch up to his peers. Without their help, my son would not be the social butterfly he has become through their, through therapy and assistance. Our early childhood providers provide the resources our children need to thrive, so why haven't, why shouldn't we provide for, provide the same for them? I apologize. And please forgive me in advance if I mispronounce this name. From Bolinol Ambadasi. Hope I got that right. Please forgive me if I didn't. I support Bill 188. It makes sense that we all support 188. Why, you ask? This society does not have a process that equips its citizens to be effective parents, so it naturally goes that society does not, doesn't have a process that equips its parents to provide a home environment that supports academic success. Ready by Five clearly sees the problem and has created a workable solution to fill the gaps until we come to our senses and create these processes as a regular part of life and living. I'm asking you to care, not in the feeling sense, but in the dictionary definition sense, to provide what is needed for the health, maintenance, development, and protection of someone or something. Voting in favor means we're willing to provide. Voting against means you are unwilling to provide. Period. Thank you for your attention.
Continuing with the comments. From Kim Elias, Elias, sorry about that. I am writing out of personal frustration for the inaction taking place to care for the most vulnerable people in our population, those with special needs. It is abhorrent what is happening to families who care for a member of their family who has special needs. They are being totally ignored. Single parents and dual-income families are having to choose between keeping their jobs or caring for their children or adults with special needs. It's unbelievable that the special school district expects these children to sit in front of a computer all day for their education and therapies. They are obviously ill-prepared or uneducated about the true needs of these students. We have a 14-year-old son with Down Syndrome. He cannot independently do any of the schoolwork or therapies, especially in front of a screen. He is regressing and missing very much-needed social interaction. I thought Sam Page was going to do something for these families. Obviously not. We don't need another tax. We need to use all of the money already received wisely. How about using some CARES money to help out people with special needs? They are currently not receiving the free and appropriate education guaranteed to them by law. You will be judged by how you treat the least of these. You can ignore our letters, but you cannot ignore our children. Next comment from, comment from Janet Dietrich. How long will we all stand by and let our children be pawns in political games? I know that the members of the county commission vote along purely partisan lines. Both people on both sides of the aisle have children. The school district in St. Louis County have said that they don't have enough teachers to run in-person school and to run online studies as well. Of course they don't, but surrounding counties are all back in school in person with safety precautions in place, but not St. Louis County schools. Why? Publicly, the districts point to the county health department. Privately, they point to the teachers' union. The governor's office blames the districts and St. Louis County. The teachers who want to come to work whisper that they are being bullied by the NEA and local union chapters. So the kids, once again, are caught between unscrupulous, power-hungry adults. This is shameful. The students who stand to suffer the most are those students with learning disabilities. These students with IEPs, Individualized Educational Plans, have a very difficult time attending to lessons in the most perfect environments. These students need frequent and, in some cases, constant help and redirection from specially-trained teachers. They almost always focus better at school and benefit greatly from direct contact from their talented teachers. Learning disabled kids are constantly in danger of falling through the cracks in this world. They are easily distracted, and it is extremely difficult to set up a home environment conducive to learning for these children. They desperately need their special ed teachers in classrooms. Please, I am begging this county commission to encourage the school districts to provide in-person learning at least two days per week for all students who hold IEPs. These children face incredible difficulties every day in negative, in navigating a world that is incompatible with the way they think. Our learning disabled kids have a few short, precious years in school to learn to find their way in this scary world. These kids are creative and caring and have much to offer humanity. They are the original outside-the-box thinkers. Please do not allow politics to cheat these valuable members of our community. Next comment from Deb Matush. Well, first, a congratulations to Mr. Page. While I'm not a fan, you won. Now, the real work begins for those of us who oppose your platform. I hope you become more transparent as the election gets closer. That said, I have a couple of comments today. First, the dilemma of our schools. I was at the dentist last week. My hygienist was lam, lamenting, excuse me, that she was not sure what she and her husband were going to do to try to accommodate their children's education. She could not wrap her mind around the fact that if she could go to work and have her hands and face in people's mouths, why teachers can't teach? Her children are five and eight. No answer there. And then there's our special needs children who cannot learn by virtual means. Their minds can't do it. Second, the tax increase proposal. Do you all realize that St. Louis County is one of the highest tax counties in the nation? It seems to me that this council is turning into a tax-and-spend county, just a tidbit of what happens when counties tax themselves out of prosperity. New York City has 300 people a day leaving. California may lose a seat in the House. People are leaving Chicago in droves. This our largest third, our third-largest city in America. Baltimore's population has dropped by levels not seen since the Great Depression. Reasons being stated are skyrocketing housing costs and taxes. Did you hear that? Taxes. Don't do it, specifically for the reasons you want the money for. The money is already there if you just choose to spend it correctly. Furthermore, I would challenge the constitutionality of your spending target, already money there. of your spending target, already money there. Please don't do this. You can add an early exodus from St. Louis. You do this, and the exodus will increase. We are presently looking for land to do just that. Next comment is from Bob Nation. My name is Bob Nation, and I am the mayor of the city of Chesterfield. I am writing in opposition to this ill-conceived bill, which may in fact be unconstitutional because, according to Article 6, Section 18(c), St. Louis County does not have the authority to involve itself in the services and functioning of school districts. As a basic fundamental of local government, be it county or municipal, we are guided by and given authority for what we are responsible to provide in the way of services. We are also precluded from spending tax dollars on purposes that are not specified in state statute or local ordinances. Not only is the bill itself vaguely worded, but the enabling statute contains language suggesting the revenues raised may be spent outside the boundaries of St. Louis County. To me, this is suggestive of the perceived intent of the ill-fated Better Together, which was exposed for all of its ill-conceived ideas just a little over a year ago. Not only have we seen the inexplicable lack of oversight in the expenditure of federal CARES Act funding, but we have also seen the stubbornness of the county council to allow the distribution of the $47 million towards reimbursement of public safety expenses as a subcategory of the federal funds. The idea that it is okay to put something on a ballot and let the voters decide is an absolute cop-out, especially the two members of the council who happen to have law degrees should know better that this, because each of you have taken an oath to uphold the Constitution and laws of the state. Give us responsible county government, not slush fund management. Miss management, I'm sorry. I apologize that my remarks were hurriedly written, but the early cutoff time unfortunately is a fact. Next comment is from Stacy Washington. I was dismayed to hear that you plan to ram through a ballot proposal to tax us even more, and you appear to be oblivious to the fact that residents are suffering from business closures and loss of income. It's irresponsible and totally to-be-expected from a council probably run by a squad. Madam Chair, that is all of the written comments.
Thank you. We will proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 189, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $179,535 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Public Health's participation in the city's readiness initiative, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 190, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the city of St. Louis for the Department of Public Health to receive reimbursement for testing and treatment services provided to certain patients at the St. Louis County Department of Public Health Sexual Health Clinic, and authorizing the acting director of the Department of Public Health to execute additional necessary documents. Madam Chair, those are the bills.
Moving on to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 175, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
Please hold Bill number 175 on the order of business.
Bill number 175 is held.
Bill number 176, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
Please hold Bill 176 on the order of business.
Bill 176 is held.
Bill number 183, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 183.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 183 is perfected.
Bill number 184, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 184.
Second.
Madam Chair, we have just been in a discussion.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Fitch.
I will be abstaining on Bill 184 since my daughter wants an American transplant. Just wanted to explain that before voting.
All right. Thank you. I believe I heard a second from Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 184 is perfected.
And Madam Chair, the record will reflect Councilwoman Fitch's abstention.
Thank you.
Moving on to Bill number 185, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 185, please.
Second, Harder.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 185 is perfected.
Bill number 186, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 186. Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 186 is perfected.
Bill number 187, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 187. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 187 is perfected.
Bill number 188, introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Daze, and Dunaway.
I'd like to say a few words. What we have before us needs some work, and this is important enough to get it as good as we can. Especially, I know, especially after listening to today's comments, that this bill is urgent, and a better version of this bill belongs on a November ballot. I'm not willing to wait any longer to ask voters to invest in early childhood. Which months or years of a child's life would you be willing to put off? My son spoke his first word at nine and walked at year one. At almost four, he knows Tuesday and reminds me that Tuesday is county council day. Parents and teachers know what kids learn in each of those crucial early years. So I'm working on a substitute bill. And for those who are still opposed after a substitute bill is announced, even after months of work by a broad community, even after lots of compromises, put it on the ballot anyway and work against it. But please, let's work to get this on the ballot. That, I will hold this bill. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Please hold Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385.
Substitute Bill number 2 for Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Please hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold Bill number 76.
Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 168, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 168.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 168, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 168 is finally passed.
Bill number 169, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 169.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
And Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 169, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 169 is finally passed.
170, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 170. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilman Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
And Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 170, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 170 is finally passed.
Bill number 171, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 171.
Second.
Madam Chair, discussion, please.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you. For starters, I believe earlier today, in response to Communication Number 6, I think it was, that you had ordered this matter to be referred to committee of the whole. So I don't see how that somehow vitiated now since I think it's already been ordered that the matter should be referred to committee of the whole. The clerk can confirm that if you want, I think.
It was referred to the committee of the whole, and we could take it up for a discussion, but just because something is moved to a committee of the whole doesn't mean there's going to be a hearing for it necessarily. It is my position, Councilwoman Tracus, that this is a grant from the federal government, from housing and urban development that will help to provide crucial housing resources for people, which I think is as important as ever now that we are in the midst of a global health pandemic and ensuing housing crisis.
Very well then. I just want to state for the record that recently the federal government has acted to rescind or repeal the 2015 rules known as affirmatively furthering fair housing, or AFFH. The 2015 AFFH rules allow HUD to attach to the acceptance and receipt of HUD grants the requirement that local governments, like St. Louis County, that accept such funds must adopt zoning ordinances thereby removing local control of zoning from elected authorities who are responsible to the citizens of their community. The failure to adopt the federally-required zoning changes can result in the clawback and freezing of not just the HUD grant funds, but federal funds that have nothing to do with AFFH for HUD grants, such as federal funds intended for infrastructure improvement. At my request, the county councilor has researched the status of the repeal of the 2015 AFFH rules and has advised that the 2015 rules have not yet been rescinded, but barring other action by the federal government, will be repealed and replaced effective September 8, 2020. In other words, the new rules which repeal and replace the 2015 AFFH rules will become effective in a mere three weeks. My concern is that by finally passing Bill number 171 today, thereby authorizing the county executive to accept HUD grant funding while AFFH is still operative, carries with it the imposition of HUD zoning requirements on St. Louis County, removing local control of this process from elected officials who are responsible to their constituent. This is antithetical to the concept of representative democracy. The timing of when the county executive signs the finally-passed bill determines the effective date of the ordinance, which will be 15 days after his signature. As the repeal of AFFH rules will not be effective until September 8, 2020, the passage of Bill 171, approval by the county executive, and acceptance of the HUD grants before September 8, 2020 will trigger the application of the 2015 AFFH requirement and federal control over zoning ordinances in unincorporated St. Louis County. It is inappropriate, and more importantly, completely unnecessary, that the council pass Bill 171 today, thereby imposing draconian federal control of zoning in unincorporated St. Louis County. The subject HUD grant fund will remain available. That is why I reiterate my request that Bill 171 be referred to committee of the whole for a hearing on how accepting the grant funds will, in Bills 171, will result in the imposition of zoning requirements on St. Louis County by the federal government or that the bill be held until the repeal and replacement of AFFH rules is effective. I would urge my colleagues to vote no in response to the motion if it goes forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further comment?
Madam Chair, I do have a question, if that is appropriate at this particular time. Is this a new proposal that we're facing here? Have we or have we not in previous years accepted this? And what is the difference, please, in this and what we have done in previous years? Is there anyone that can respond to that?
I think I can, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daze, I believe the difference is that the old rules, the 2015 rules I've spoken about, will expire or cease to exist on September 8. That means that by accepting the funds after that date, we no longer have to accept the requirement that specific zoning ordinances be adopted, removing local control of that process, otherwise lose the funding. After September 8, we won't have to run that risk. We won't lose the funding. We won't have to be forced to adopt federal government zoning requirements, whether or not they are appropriate for a given community. And I'm most concerned about unincorporated St. Louis County, obviously. So I think that's the big difference.
Okay. I'm listening to you. There's some background noise that I'm hearing here. So your statement was that the AFFA will be rescinded on September 8. Is that what you're saying? It will be rescinded. It's not necessarily that there will be some change of mind or heart, any of that?
No, no. As I understand it, as the county councilor has advised, as of September 8, unless the federal government acts before that, which is not likely, but in any case, on that date, September 8, the new rules go into effect. And those other requirements that are in place now will cease to exist, and we won't have to worry about zoning requirements being imposed on unincorporated St. Louis County.
May I ask a question?
Is that Councilwoman Dunaway?
It is, yes.
Go ahead.
So, Councilwoman Tracus, are you suggesting that if we wait for one week to vote on this, that we will be fine?
Yes. What I'm suggesting is that if the county executive's approval, that is his signature, is made so that the 15 days before the ordinance becomes effective is after September 8. The new rules adopted by the federal government and are pending now, that go into effect on September 8 will apply, and the county will no longer be under a burden of this freezing of federal funds that have nothing to do with HUD grant money, but all federal funds. So I think it's premature to act on this bill tonight when we risk nothing by simply waiting a week and allowing the new rules to take effect.
I spoke with our Department of Human Services about this yesterday. They are the experts here in St. Louis County that I turn to on these matters to ask about the potential consequences of this. And I think that we do have a risk if we wait. And that risk is the longer we wait to pass this... And that risk is, the longer we wait to pass this, the longer it's going to take for the execution of this grant to occur. And again, this is, these are resources that need to get in the hands of people right now, our most vulnerable residents, especially during a housing crisis. And, Councilman Tracus, I respect your, I respect your opinion about your concern, impact your district. But I also hear a lot of ifs. And so, you know, I think we need to go ahead and vote on this. I hear that maybe you have a request also, that maybe this could just wait to be signed. But I would go ahead and move forward with final passage right now.
I respectfully disagree that we have to proceed when the change in rules is less than a week away effectively. But anyway, I'm going to state in my case, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, one other question or suggestion as to how this could possibly work in that the county executive does not necessarily have to sign any bill that we put in front of him, is that correct? So in other words, if this does happen before he's able to sign this, then he just simply doesn't sign it, is that a possibility?
I would defer to our county councillor's office to speak on that matter.
He has veto power, if I understand.
Correct, correct, yes, if that's what you're getting at, correct.
I'm simply, I'm simply asking that question, and if our councillor is on the line, then perhaps she can answer that question. But that, that was my thought, if we pass this, and for some reason, Councilman Tracus's opinion is correct, then it's definitely that the county executive does not have to sign this legislation.
Did you want me to respond to that, Madam Chair?
Yes, Jen, please.
The Charter does provide for the county executive to within, prior to the expiration of 15 days after the bill is presented to him, to return the bill to the council stating his objections thereto. And then the Charter also provides for the council, if they wish to, to take that up and vote to finally pass the bill, regardless of the county executive's objections to the bill. Also, a bill becomes enacted if the county executive would allow 15 days after presentation of the bill to expire, the bill would just, would automatically be deemed enacted.
So in other words, he could, if he sees that back to us, it is a veto. We could override the veto if that is desired of the council.
You can, yes, the Charter does, the word veto isn't in our Charter, but the Charter does allow for the council to, to pass, to pass a bill. If the county executive has returned a bill to the council stating his objections, and yes, the council can take that up and finally pass that bill despite the county executive's objections.
Wrong chamber.
Oh, that's, and then also, the bill, I think, Councilman Tracus may have said this before, whatever the enactment date of the bill is, it becomes effective, or whatever the enactment of the ordinance, whatever that date is, the bill becomes effective 15 days after that. This bill will become.
Back to 15 days after that.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
Jen, if I heard you correctly, if this passes now, the county executive sits on it, does nothing, it becomes law and it passes, is that what I heard you say?
15 days.
15 days.
15 days.
Yes.
So as far as I'm concerned, if we wait one week, I'd be more than willing to vote yes for this, if we wait one week.
What was the question, I didn't hear that.
For what it's worth, I'd vote yes in a week as well.
Then, and you would like to have a hearing between now and next week, if you already know you're going to vote yes next week?
My point is, I wanted a hearing, so that we would have the time, that a week would pass, and the effective date would be past September 8. If we're going to hold the bill, that's why my alternative request was to hold it, so that if we pass it next week, then 15 days won't take effect until after September 8, and the new rules will apply with respect to these grants going forward.
It sounds like we have some other options, though, as well. So even if this does pass today, or we could, the county executive could either wait to sign it, and that would trigger the start of the two weeks that it goes into effect, and that could then take us past the September 8 date, for example, is one option I heard, or he could veto it.
I don't, I don't know that it works that way, and perhaps the councillor can weigh in on this. If the county executive waits a week to sign it, Jen, does that mean that there's 15 days from that date before it goes into effect?
Correct, the bill would go into effect 15 days from the date of enactment. And a bill can be enacted in the three ways that we, what is being enacted is in the three ways we discussed. Either the county executive signs it, the county executive lets 15 days expire without signing or returning the bill, or the county executive can return the bill with his objections, and he has 15 days to do that, then the council can finally pass the bill despite the county executive's objections. Any of those enactments, there will still be a 15-day period after any of those dates, potential dates of enactment before the bill is, for the ordinance is effective.
So just to make sure I understand you correctly, if the county executive were to wait a week, signs the bill, it would not become effective until 15 days after the date of his signature.
Right.
Is that correct?
So it's after the date of signature, after he does, after the expiration of 15 days, if he has chosen not to do anything, or 15, 15 days after that, or 15 days after the council would, just for one of a better ways, override the veto.
Conversely, if he signed the bill tomorrow, it would go into effect in 15 days, correct?
15 days after tomorrow.
Right, and that would be before September 8. Trust me, it would. Anyway, I think it's remiss on this body to put that on the county executive. I've made the argument, and I think there's no real reason, legitimate reason, to rush to pass this bill today. I don't see any problem with it for a week. I'll leave it at that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I can, Madam Chair.
Yeah, Councilman Gray.
Why we've interjected the county executive in the conversation, because we don't know what he's going to do for that question. So I was, I was wondering about that myself.
So, Councilman Tracus, let me understand your request correctly. You are not saying a hearing is necessary. You are asking to wait a week, to hold this for one week.
Correct.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly, because your initial request did include a Committee of the Whole hearing. I'm not sure that that is necessary, as much as it is your request to wait a week.
Right, my request for the Committee of the Whole was simply to bring some attention and get some answers to questions. I pursued that through the county exec, county councillor's office, to wait a week, that I think my concerns with respect to the September 8 effectiveness of the new rules is taken care of.
So, I'm hearing, I mean, I, would you all like to wait a week on this? Am I, is that what I'm hearing? There is.
Madam Chair, I believe, I see some deference to the fact that this is something new. I would suggest very strongly that since it's only a week we'll be reading next week, that we hold that for a week. I don't, I don't see where that's going to be, make an appreciable difference in what we're doing today.
I agree.
Madam Chair, I agree.
Okay, and I think that that is a good compromise between having a hearing and waiting a week, and then, or just waiting a week. And I can be okay with that. I will reiterate my concern that, you know, we're in desperate need of resources in our community right now. A week isn't as long as it could be. And we can go ahead and hold this. I appreciate the respectful conversation and dialogue that we have had. So, very well then, Councilman Tracus, we will go ahead and hold Number 171.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, moving on.
Bill Number 172, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 172, please.
Second, Harder.
I'm sorry, did I hear someone interject?
I believe it was Councilman Harder, I believe.
Okay, second from Councilman Harder, roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 172, you have seven ayes.
Bill Number 172 is finally passed.
Bill Number 173, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 173.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
And Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 173, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 173 is finally passed.
Bill Number 174, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 174.
Second, Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
And Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 174, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 174 is finally passed.
Bill Number 177, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 177.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 177, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 177 is finally passed.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 178, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 178.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 178, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 178 is finally passed.
Bill Number 179, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 179.
Second, Harder.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 179, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 179 is finally passed.
Bill Number 180, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 180.
Second, Harder.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Chair, on Bill Number 180, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 180 is finally passed.
Bill Number 181, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 181.
Second, Harder.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 181, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 181 is finally passed.
Bill Number 182, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill Number 182.
Second, Harder.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 182, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 182 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions this afternoon, Madam Chair, we have one resolution introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of order number 1.
Second.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 1, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number 1 is adopted. Unfinished business.
Item Number 1.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item Number 2.
We are in the process of scheduling a Committee of the Whole, so we will hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening. In the matter, excuse me, sorry. This order is in the matter of donations of various items that supported the Kathy J. Weinman Shelter.
I move for the adoption of order number 1.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, order number 1 is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda, any, any further comments?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
Just one, for those that were able to join the police board meeting today, we heard something disturbing for the first time, at least from that department and maybe other departments. It basically called for the department to make $7 million in cuts. That would be 100 employees, that's officers and employees, or for the contracts that this council approved last year to be null and void as far as pay raises go. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, in case they didn't have a chance to listen to that meeting this morning. And I hope that we will hear something very soon from the county executive's office about this.
Thank you, Councilman Fitch, I know I was able to tune into portions of the meeting, and it was, it was very hard to hear the. and it was, it was very hard to hear the discussion. So I appreciate the report out. I do hope that the Police Commission will post their meeting video so that we can hopefully hear the discussion. I heard there was quite a bit. I know that we have another meeting shortly. We will reconvene for our next meeting at 4:20. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Thank you all.